We would like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. We'd like to turn our, and obviously I'd like to welcome everybody here in chambers, those who might be participating via the Internet or watching our YouTube channel. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate to stand for our invocation given by Reverend Michael Bell of Kingman Nazarene Church, after which if you could remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Almighty God, we give thanks and praise to you this day for all your mighty works. You are loving, good, and gracious to us. Thank you for creating and sustaining us throughout our lives. We thank you for this council and the work that they do. We pray that your wisdom and guidance be given them this day as they seek to further the operation of this city. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory, and may your hand of protection be upon every city worker this day. And I pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. And I will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. We have one, item number one, appointments. One A, request for removal of Commissioner Heritage, request for removal of Commissioner Heritage Preservation Commission. Staff is requesting the removal of Heritage Preservation Commissioner Rhiannon Turley due to nonresponsiveness to communication. In preparation for their July 23rd, 2024 commission meeting, staff attempted to contact Commissioner Turley through email and by phone with no response. Additional attempts to make contact since that time have also resulted in no response. In accordance to city, in accordance to city code 2-156H, council may remove a commissioner with or without cause. Staff recommends removal of Commissioner Rhiannon Turley. Councilor Ward, you are on this commission. Any comment?
No, I'll make the motion that we remove them.
You're making that motion?
Yes.
Right now. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 1B, Heritage Preservation Commission Appointment. The Heritage Preservation Commission currently has one vacancy with a term ending in, on December 31st, 2024, due to the removal of Commissioner Turley. Two applications have been received from Donna Peterson and Leah Stagg. Those applications have been reviewed by the council liaison, mayor, and staff. Residency and voter registration status have been verified. Upon review, the team recommends council appoint Leah Stagg for a full first term on the Heritage Preservation Commission with an end date of December 31st, 2028. Councilor Ward, we'll turn some more time over to you.
Yeah, I've reviewed both those applications. Both the people are super qualified. The Leah Stagg is the one that I would recommend.
Okay.
If we had two openings, we could fill them, but we don't.
Leah is here tonight. Leah, would you like to come up and, do you have any comment? Or, you don't need to if you don't want to, but you're more than welcome to if you'd like to come up and say anything.
I just wanted to say that this commission is incredibly important to me. History is my job, but it's also my passion, so anything I can do in the local community. I deal on a daily basis with Kingman history and Mojave County history, and so I am excited about the prospect of being able to further that reach in the community.
Thank you, Leah. Actually, would you tell the rest of the council if they don't know what your job is? Because it's totally related with this commission.
So I am the new Executive Director of the Mojave County Historical Society. So like I said, this is something that I deal with on a daily basis, and we work in the education program that we've started to further it. And so to me, this was another, another way for me to, to use my passion and to find a way to, you know, we deal with the museum structures, we deal with artifacts, and we deal with primary documents. But one of the things that I think sometimes we that work in museums forget is that the actual physical structures of buildings, the heritage that we deal with in our community has to be preserved as well. And so for me, this is an extension of what I already see as important. This is right along with those artifacts that I deal with, right there with those primary documents, so.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Leah? Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it. Councilor Ward, would you like to make a motion then?
I will make a motion that we appoint Leah Stagg for the full term, ending December 31st, 2028.
Great, thank you. Do we have a, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith?
Mayor, we don't have anybody that signed up to address the council this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, have we all had a chance to take a look at these items? And are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Okay. Can we have a motion then approving our item number three consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, A, Old Business, Street Payback Program. This agenda item is for consideration and approval of a street improvement payback program. Kingman's development regulations require builders and developers to improve unmaintained existing rights of way within the city to the nearest paved roadway. The current development regulations also allow the construction of half plus eight roadways within existing rights of way. The council requested options to prevent the maintenance, safety, and aesthetic issues in neighborhoods caused by half-street development while allowing builders to recoup costs associated with the betterment of property they do not own. A street payback option similar in nature to the city sewer and water payback programs was presented to the council as a department report. If the payback program is approved, changes to the street and sidewalk rules and regulations will be required. These changes and the street payback program would be brought back to a future council meeting for adoption by resolution. Staff requests council direction. Jack, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. That sounded a lot shorter when I read it. I apologize. Maybe I'll just go sit down. I think we got it covered already. But bringing back the street payback that you guys have seen before, Phil had brought this to you in the past, and we would receive comments on the program itself and some of the characteristics of the program that council had wanted to see, and that included the half plus eight elimination and taking care of that. So we'll run through that real quick. I do want to note, there were, there were two minor, yes ma'am, I didn't share it. I probably did not. Yes, ma'am. All right, sorry about that. So some of these slides you guys have already saw, they were reused from Phil's. Just talks about the street development overview and how those requirements are triggered. So just a quick background for those that are listening in, as you guys know, we have a lot of old platted right-of-way and subdivisions, and they're not, they do not have improved roadways. They're not dirt road, they're not asphalt paved. And so in order for somebody to develop a property on one of those unimproved roadways, they have to make the connection back to an existing paved roadway. And so what we've seen in the past, especially now with the infill development that's occurring, is a developer will purchase up, will purchase most of the properties on a block, and they'll develop that roadway, but unfortunately what ends up happening is they don't get any payback if the property owner won't sell, they can't purchase it for some reason. And so they develop that frontage, which creates a betterment for the other individuals. Really, the big part of this as well, as mentioned in the description, is also the issues that are created as far as safety, you know, we have lack of sidewalks, or we have disjointed, heard them called before, bucktooth sidewalks. We don't have them connected, and so we end up with potential for trip hazards and things. It affects traffic because the roadways aren't fully developed, whether it's, you know, a half a block is complete, or maybe we have a half-street, which is what the council had wanted to address. So we're trying to take care of those as well. Creates big maintenance issues because we end up with, we currently have about eighteen and a half miles of roadway, which is actually what started ordinance 1816 and trying to address these old legacy subdivisions. And so we have roads that are half-paved, or we have half-blocks that have become a maintenance, ongoing maintenance issue for the city. So we're trying to address those. All roadways will be required to meet current city standards, so there's no change to those standards with this program. Again, talking about the challenges during infill, what we see is trying to get those properties developed. If you're in the middle of the block and you have to make a connection back, you have no means to recover those costs. All of our utilities, water and sewer, have an option through a payback that you can get your pro-rata share of the frontage of those other lots paid back, and so that's what this program was modeled after. The difference that will require some changes to the street and sidewalk regs if this were adopted is to get rid of that half plus eight language in the street and sidewalk regs and a couple other adjustments that we would bring back with a resolution and those changes at a future council update. So tonight, we're looking if there's any other feedback, or if we're happy, we can accept the street payback language as it is. So let's just show the public what a half plus eight street is if they don't understand. What you're looking at right here is a typical section of one of our local streets, so one is your residential streets. And as you can see, there's curb and sidewalk on both sides and a fully developed roadway. The red box would be the portion that is undeveloped. You would develop everything on one side to the center line of the road, and then an additional eight feet of pavement, so that leaves you with no curb gutter sidewalk on the other side. Here's a couple pictures, so people can see what that looks like. These are over behind the hospital, and there's various different, you know, single and multifamily residences over there. And as you can see, one side of the road is, is developed fully, and then you have less than a full roadway of asphalt, which again presents a safety hazard at times. The picture on the right, you can see the south side of the road is developed, you go down a half a block, and the north side of the road is developed. So we end up with a lot of disjointed development. I mentioned already that we're going to have to, to address the half plus eight street ordinance in the street and sidewalk regs, and so we would bring that back again for council's review. This will apply to all new development that has to connect back or into existing right-of-way plus. The way the city ordinance is written right now, any development on one of the accepted roadways may trigger development requirements if the, the improvements are over $50,000. The, I would like to make a couple notes before I get back into the framework proposal. I had loaded onto the council a draft of this. There were a couple minor changes. They don't change the nature of it. Really, it was moving the language in one section to a section that was more appropriate. I just didn't catch the comment before I had loaded that. So I made that change. And then also, the timelines were a little bit different than what was in the street, or I'm sorry, in the sewer and water paybacks. And so we made those timelines for having to provide the receipts for the improvements, and then also requesting the paybacks mirror that of the street and sidewalk, keep going to street and sidewalk regs, sewer and water, I'm stuck on streets. So in here, as it mentions, the agreement would be within 60 days of city acceptance. That's actually 120 days that they, they have to approve that for a payback agreement. In that, the developer has to bring in the receipts for that project, and those are reviewed by engineering to make sure that they're reasonable in nature. And this program is, was requested, we had some conversation whether it applied to subdivisions or not. A lot of times with subdivisions, or at least historically what we've seen, those subdivisions are bordering what would be most likely an arterial road, maybe a collector. Collectors are already required, the developers are already required to develop. The example of Kingman Crossing with our arterials, that's a little bit different. Now, we could have a scenario where they, they're not developing across their frontage for a subdivision to be connected to, back to a paved road. I'm thinking the east benches, that starts to develop and people have to connect to Rancho or to Airway, you could see satellite subdivisions, similar like what Rancho would have been. And so they would have to make that connection back. So we did include arterials, and it's open to subdivisions, but subdivisions are a little bit different in the subdivision regs, but we did make sure that arterials and subdivisions would fall under this where applicable. That is also for commercial and residential development. As I mentioned, the reimbursement would be per linear foot across your frontage, so you would take half the road cost, and across your frontage, you would pay for the, the curb gutter sidewalk, asphalt, all the things that, that are to make that street a fully developed right-of-way. And so the only exception to that that you'll see is a corner lot. And typically, like in the improvement district, what they did is they shared that across all of the lots because you have a double frontage, and you know, it benefits all the properties, not just the corner property. And so the language addresses that in, in the street payback, and it just says it will be shared across in a, in a reasonable way essentially. I mentioned that the fees are reviewed for reasonable, or reasonableness, and then the fees are collected at the time of development. So I developed a property, two years later, somebody comes and pulls a building permit. At that point in time, that person would have to pay back the, their pro-rata share of those improvements. And again, it eliminates the half plus eight roadway. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Jack? Councilor Staley?
I just want to clarify, what I heard you say is that this applies to an area where the street doesn't exist yet? Is that correct? If it's a, if it's a dirt road that's already been accepted into the system and is getting maintenance, will this apply?
No, it would not, because that's a maintained road.
Okay.
The only exception to that would be if, and I don't have an example at the moment, I guess, is if you had a subdivision that was developing and one of those maintained dirt roads fronted that subdivision, they would have to pave back to the nearest paved road because it's not accept, it's not a connection to a maintained road, it's to a paved maintained road. I don't have any examples of that, but that would be one of the few that I could think of.
Okay, so we won't, it won't really eliminate half streets when it comes to, like we just saw an item come through where it was for a church that's locating on Bank Street, and we talked about the street behind the church, and they were going, they were going to be required to do the half-street on the backside if it was going to be used as an exit. And I think that's Rainbow, maybe, that street? And so that was a maintained road, and we just, we, in the, in that example, we would keep seeing half streets.
Because that's a maintained road, let me back up. They have primary access to Bank Street, and so they wouldn't be required to develop from their property all the way back to a paved road in that scenario. And, and I said eliminate half streets, I need to back myself up for just a moment. I had a note in here, and I didn't open it, and I should have, but what you may see, there are, and I can think of one example right off the top of my head, where you have half of a section has been subdivided. And so the right-of-way, half of which has been dedicated, but the properties next to that have not dedicated the remainder of the right-of-way. To keep the alignment of the road, so you don't crowd, say, you know, a hundred-foot right-of-way all the way into a property and end up with, with roads that weave in and out of that alignment, there, there is an exception that the road would be paved fully unless there is not enough right-of-way, and then at which time you would get a half plus eight or a two-lane road, whichever is wider. And so that is the one exception. The Bank Street example is a little bit different because they had primary access off of
Bank.
Bank Street. But for infill development, that should eliminate the half plus eight, with the exception that I just listed or mentioned.
Okay. This, this came up, you know, because Joe Jules was building off of Airway, and there was that street we talked about, leading out of the subdivision, and he was going to pave half the road to get them to Airway, get you out of, out to Airway, but coming in, it would still be on dirt. Is he going to be able to use this program to pave that, that street?
I'm not entirely familiar with, I know the subdivision or the development that you're talking about, and this would be, that, that development would be eligible for those paybacks the way this is written.
Okay.
Yes.
So one positive and one negative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor Watkins, if I may, just real quick.
Yes.
With regards to, to maintained roads, I don't know that this, and Jack can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that this would differentiate between a maintain, a dirt road that's maintained versus not maintained. I think where this applies is as part of the development, if they're required to do half-street improvements at least, they could utilize, we could utilize this program to require the full street improvements, and then they could get half paid back for the opposite side.
That's good.
So I think wherever, wherever we would typically, under our current system, wherever we require half plus eight, we could expand that to the full, full width, and then they could get paid back for the opposite side.
Okay. I think this is a good step forward. I mean, we've, we've been trying to solve this for as long as I've been here and probably long before me. It's, it's a nice step forward. I think we all just want to get to, to the point where we're not seeing half streets anymore, and how do we, and even how do we go back and fix all the ones that we have now? You know, I, I know that's complicated, but I'm sure you can figure that out for us.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Eric, and then Counselor Walker.
I do have a question.
Oh.
I think for Manager Walsh. Now, you said we could use this. Is this going to be a requirement, or is this going to be an option?
That is, Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Walker, I, I think we're looking into that, and I believe Attorney Cooper may have some additional information that we may want to share in executive session as far as when we can require it, what we, what we can require, when we can require it in that. So I would suggest at some point in this conversation that, that maybe we do recess into executive just to be able to share some of those scenarios, but yeah, that, that will, that is part of the discussion of, is this an option versus is this required?
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Eric?
Yeah, two slides ago, can we go back two slides? Bullet point three, where they submitted written form agreement. I was wondering, are we working off of, just to clarify, are we working off of quotes, or do they have to complete the work and then submit within the 60 days after the work's been completed? Is there a chance that they, that it doesn't go through, that it falls through, they, they get stuck with the bill? How, can you kind of explain how the process works?
Sure. So the work must be done for them to apply for the payback. They're actually looking at receipts to make sure that the work was done, so in the scenario you're asking, there's a potential that we could pay somebody and then they don't complete the work and, and, or set a payback and then they don't complete the work.
And with their, with their labor, their, their materials, not with city staff, not with your department?
Correct, no city, no city staff involved in that. And so when it says the written agreement, there's two parts to the written agreement. One, you have to have a formal acceptance, which with subdivisions and release of assurances and plaits and things, you guys see those. For some of these infill subdivisions, we don't have a formal process at the moment. They pull a right-of-way permit, they make their improvements, and then it's done. So administratively, we would have to draft a letter that, which is similar to the water and sewer paybacks, that says, excuse me, that details the, the criteria in that payback, the cost, the timing, everything else. And we issue a acceptance of the improvements, and then they provide a request, they, the developer, would provide a request to the city for setting up the payback agreement. And that payback agreement has to be executed within a certain timeframe, or they lose eligibility. There's no opportunity for them to, to have that payback agreement in place.
Okay, and are you going off, just one last question, are we going off of provided invoices, or do you have a standard number per square foot, or is it appraised?
So they are, they, the developer has to provide the receipts for the work, and then that gets reviewed. The way it's written right now would be through engineering, which again is similar to sewer and water paybacks, and they look at that for the reasonableness of those invoices. So we have costs that we know that it takes to, you know, do curb or sidewalk or asphalt, and so if you get an invoice in, it's three times that, we're going to question that. And so there is an opportunity to review that and make sure that those, the costs are being shared across all of those property owners in a equitable way.
And then it's just divided by how many lots are not, are available on that, on that?
By linear frontage. So, you know, if you have a hundred-foot lot, you're going to pay less than somebody has a 200-foot frontage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to confirm, so the, the existing half roads that we have, they, there is still the option for an improvement district within those properties, and, and we can walk property owners through that process, correct?
There is, and, and we've, we've had property owners approach us, and we've approached property owners and presented the improvement districts. We haven't had a lot of luck on that yet. There are some other options that, Carl sent some information that I actually wanted to follow up specific to the existing half streets, but I don't know whether or not it will, it will benefit us at the moment.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew there is an option out there for those that are living on that dirt side of the road.
Yes.
For improvements.
And we would be happy to do, walk them through what the process is, take them through, Engineering's website has that information, and so anybody that's interested in that can contact Public Works or Engineering, and we can, can walk them through that.
Okay, perfect. That's all I had. I, if you have a question, I was going to ask to go into executive session, so if you have something else.
Yeah, I do have a question. Can you explain to the citizens on how that payback actually takes place? Does the money get added to the sale of the home? Does it?
So.
Is it a tax?
It, it's not a tax. We, we are, we, the city, is just a pass-through, so there's no money put up front when the property goes to develop, and, and actually, we probably need to have some conversation on this. I did not ask that specific question, so thank you for asking it. At what point would trigger the requirement for a payback? I would assume it would be at building permit, and again, that I would assume it would be at building permit, and again, that would mirror water and sewer. So we come in to pull a building permit, they review the permit application, see, hey, this parcel number has a payback, and before we'll issue that permit, you have to pay that payback. We, the city, would receive those funds, and then we have a specific timeline that we have to get those funds to the person listed in the payback. And there's no interest, administration fees, nothing like that. We're just a pass-through. Comes to us to, for them to be able to pull their permit, and then we get that directly to the individual that is due those paybacks.
Then Vice Mayor, before you ask, before anything, can I ask one more question? Hypothetically speaking, with what's going on with like the rezonings on Bank, and just kind of forget that they're already maintained, but let's say on the front side on Bank, you have those properties that are commercial lots, right? And they're going to have egress on to Bank, most likely, with their back cut off. If the street behind them gets into, wrapped into the street payback program, would they be responsible, even though they're not using the street behind them? Would they be wrapped into this as well?
They.
Do you mention egress or use of the road in, in this?
Yeah, we did not specifically pull in ingress-egress off of secondary accesses. There's a lot of variables to that. What I would say, we would see, similar to the example that was provided on Bank Street, is there is a deferral process in the street and sidewalk regs. So there's a number of options that that, those improvements can be deferred off to another time. Maybe it doesn't make sense to construct it from a elevation standpoint. You know, you design it for curb and gutter, but it doesn't line up with the current dirt road. It could be because of drainage and other things. And so the process for deferrals would still stand. If they had that requirement, and they're supposed to re, to develop off their secondary access, they still have the ability to defer that, I'm sorry, to request a deferral, and then council can either approve or deny that deferral.
Vice Mayor, you'd like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session for attorney information, please.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
So moved.
Okay. This should be short and sweet, so we invite everybody to stick around. We should be back quickly. Thank you. Oh, wait, Carl, the, I didn't vote. I'm sorry. All those in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Annie, are we ready?
I'm going.
Okay. Thank you for your patience and for sticking around. And we've received some clarification, but I think council, after talking with Jack and, and in front of you, I think Jack has a pretty good idea of what council would like to move forward. Any other comments for Jack? Questions? Or questions from you, Jack?
No, I was just getting ready in case you had something. So if you're good, then I'm good, and thank you very much.
Okay. We will move forward on this, and it'll come back to council sometime in October.
Correct.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Item number five, new business, 5A, authorization to enter into a five-year contract with Granicus for the smart, for Smart Gov permitting, licensing, and planning software. A request for proposals, RFP, was released on April 25, 2024, requesting qualified providers to submit proposals for a software solution to replace Trackett, the city's permitting and licensing software. 14 companies submitted a response. The proposals were reviewed and scored based on the evaluation criteria, resulting in the recommendation of award to Smart Gov, a Granicus product. Funding was approved with the fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget and five-year capital improvement plan with, with a project budget of $350,000 for implementation and first-year subscription costs. The quote recommended for approval is $110,509. Taxes are not included on the quote and will be assessed upon invoicing. Funding for this project will come from the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval of award to Smart Gov for $110,509, plus any applicable taxes. Tina, welcome.
Good evening, thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Well, I am so excited to present this item to you this evening. It is going to increase our productivity throughout our organization, and just as importantly, it's going to provide an increased level of service to all of our external customers. So this is very exciting. I do want to give some background on how we got to tonight's item. So as the mayor, well, let me first introduce Jean and Helen. They are with Granicus and the Smart Gov platform. They were both, they both demonstrated the product with us, and Helen would actually serve as one of the implementation specialists if the item is approved this evening. So if there are any technical questions that you have, they'll be here to, to answer those questions. Thank you so much, Jean and Helen. But we did, to the mayor's point, as he was sharing in the summary, we, we received 14 proposals, which, wow, that is pretty impressive. We, we narrowed that down to seven proposals after we went through kind of an evaluation of the basic elements that are required to be provided in those submissions. So we actually had seven proposals that we could demo, and we, as an evaluation committee, there were four of us, decided to ask that six of them demonstrate their products. And we spent the course of a week looking over those demonstrations. We had some of the vendors on site, and we were able to ask all sorts of questions and see their product in full, in, in full mode. And we were impressed with actually all of them. And in those demonstrations, we actually asked several of the other departments' employees to come and participate in those. So it wasn't just the four-member evaluation committee, but it was some of the employees that are actually going to use the system. So at the end of the demonstrations, all of us on that panel had two top, the same two top providers, and that was MCCI and Granicus. And so after that, we performed an extensive reference check on both of those organizations. And we also then circled back together, compared notes, put our scores together, and then looked at pricing. I want to make it a point that pricing was not a determining factor in this decision, only in the final decision. And so when looking at the cost of the providers, there was, it was clear that Granicus was going to win the bid, or certainly bring to you for consideration to enter into a contract then, it's the significant savings over MCCI. So this evening, we are asking for you to consider us entering into a five-year contract with Granicus. Now, if it is, the contract is awarded this evening, we will have a project kickoff call in just a couple of weeks, and we are hoping to have the project implemented within six to nine months max. So by the end of the fiscal year, we should have it fully implemented. Now, I do want to also share that this will replace our permitting, planning, and our licensing systems. It will also replace, or I guess improve, our code enforcement system. So there's that code enforcement piece as well. And customers will be able to report things that are going on. So weeds, or potholes, or water leaks, they'll be able to report that in the system. They'll have the ability to, to do that. So it's a pretty extensive portal. I think our customers are going to love the system. And I know that our, in, that our staff is going to love the improvement as well. And so I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions for, for Tina? Counselor Saly?
So, the portal, that's going to be on our website?
Yes.
And then if I have a business license, can I pay online, renew online, get a new one? Everything online?
Everything online, yes. Payment, application, renewals, as in the permitting process, or even in the licensing process, as reviewers, internal reviewers, are reviewing those applications, any comments, any notes, anything needed from the applicant, they will be notified via an email saying, hey, you know, you need to provide this, or it's in this step of the process. It provides all of that functionality.
That's really nice. As a user, would I set up an account that I would use for everything that I do at the city? Or, for example, if I was going to use it for code enforcement for a property with weeds, do I need to log in, or is that a more general use, where you can just go in and put in address information and that kind of thing?
So from a code enforcement perspective?
Mm-hmm.
You can log in and register or not. The benefit of registering is that you'll get updates as to what's happening.
Feedback on the process? That's really nice.
Yeah, and if you don't, then that's okay, too. You won't get any feedback, but you do not have to log in to file a code enforcement complaint.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
So I had a couple of questions, and then just some clarification. Will this also be available for those that are applying for event permits?
It will. Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. And then for our builder community, is this going to help them through the process? So they submit for their projects, they're going to get updates, it's going to move from department to department, they're going to know exactly where their project is in the course of approval?
They are, and they're going to get to see all of the comments along the way as well, yes.
So are they going to need to log in to get this information, or are they going to receive push notifications?
They will receive notifications.
Fantastic. All right. This is really going to help our builder community keep track of where their projects are. keep track of where their projects are. And I feel like it's also going to help because they're not going to be calling in and, you know, having to disrupt staff, and staff is just going to be able to move along. And they're going to, you know, know where everything is at.
I do believe it's going to greatly improve processes.
And I always like to hear that it came in under what?
Right, that's the exciting part of this, too.
I sense your excitement, so I'm excited, too. Thank you. I am very excited to see this. Implementation date, when do you see this going?
So we are being told by Jean and Helen that in two weeks or so, we'll have a project kickoff call. And from that point forward, we'll put together a project timeline and start on the implementation. Am I right? Jean and Helen?
That is correct, Tina.
Thank you so much, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Savage?
You got here, as far as the cost, $350,000 for implementation and the first-year subscription cost. What are those additional four years going to be?
So the $350,000 is what was budgeted. So we are spending $110,000 the first year. Fifty of that is just the annual subscription fee. The difference is the one-time implementation fee. And then the annual support and maintenance fees thereafter are just over $50,000 per year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Eric?
You also mentioned potholes, right? You can report potholes. Yay. And then can I ask for your reference checks? Do any of our neighboring cities use this?
So they don't. Down in the valley, there are some, and that's who we reached out to. But I can share that we've talked a lot about Mojave County and the system that they use. Well, we actually were contacted by Mojave County. They're looking to change their system. And we're interested in the vendor that we have selected and wanted to demo their product as well. So that's exciting. I know Bullhead City also is looking to change their system and reached out to us shortly thereafter, after we conducted demos and asked for the same information. So I think we're all looking to change our systems. Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Helen and Jean, thanks for being available tonight. And Tina, thank you, of course, as always.
Thank you so much.
Can we have a motion then approving item 5A, authorization to enter into a five-year contact, contract with Granicus for Smart Gov permitting, licensing, and planning software?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item 5B, Economic Development Co-Work Space Initiative. The City of Kingman's Economic Development Department, Western Arizona Vocational Education Career and Technical Education District, WAVE CTED, and Mojave Community College's Small Business Development Center, SBDC, share a common goal to offer a place to act as a business incubator to attract small businesses, startup businesses, and entrepreneurs to Kingman. Given the shared objectives and complementary functions of these groups, the city was approached by WAVE CTED to consider a partnership with them and MCC to be collaborated on a shared co-working space. This initiative aims to create a dynamic environment that supports new businesses, vocational training, and entrepreneurial development. Parcel 311-16-003B has been identified as a potential location for a possible facility. Staff recommends council direct staff to continue with the discussion with WAVE CTED and MCC SBDC around a shared work facility on Parcel 311-16-003B and bring back potential development partnerships around this concept. Bennett, welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the time to go over this concept, this idea. And it really wasn't something that I came up with. And my wife will attest, you know, I hardly come up with the idea. But, you know, you add to ideas, you take ideas at work, and you try to implement them. And I think that's what we were looking at here. This concept is being done in Mojave County currently. Lake Havasu has one of these facilities in their community, and they currently operate it. But when we went, and would encourage if you guys wanted to visit that, be more than happy to take you on a tour of the facility. And James Gray, who runs the Partnership for Economic Development, has offered that. But what we're looking at is, we're actually looking at taking that concept and adding to it, you know, similar to taking the old wooden tire, adding rubber to it, and making it operate differently, what we feel would be more conducive, better for our community. So with that, though, I wanted to start off by thanking this council and past councils for taking visionary steps over the last six years that have led to economic development opportunities we see flourishing now and continuing. It's not easy, and many times, great vision and decision do not come without pushback. So city council's willingness to make sometimes difficult decisions have resulted in monumental strides forward for the City of Kingman. So what I like to do is remember back, you know, so we can kind of consider what the possibilities are in the future. And in 2009, the City of Council approved and signed the Economic Development Plan. Some of you guys, some of you council members were here, some of you weren't. But it was a monumental plan. And many communities set forth to form plans and do them. And for what, many reasons, lack of support, lack of funding, a lot of these plans end up getting put on a shelf, never to be used. Well, this economic development plan is a working document, a working plan. And I will say that there really isn't dust on this plan. It is being used. We're constantly reviewing it, looking at it, and looking for opportunities to improve it. In fact, we recently got a grant. And that grant has given us the ability to go back in and look at this plan again and go through that process with all of the things that we're working on, all of the opportunities that we're faced with. We're going to be able to improve upon that plan. So it really takes, takes a team to implement a plan. It's not just the Economic Development Department. It takes city council. It takes staff from other departments. It takes city management. So you've got planning and zoning, permitting, fire department, police, our city attorney, HR, you know, IT. Pretty much every single department in the city, you know, has to be part or buy into economic development and growth. Because that's where you'll have your successes. And I believe that we have had that. And we've worked closely with all the departments in the city in implementing this plan. And we look forward to continue to do that. So this plan did have some goals outlined in it. And so what I'd like to do is take a little bit of time, because it's been a long time since we've been through those goals, and just to remind us what those goals were and what we've accomplished. So goal number one was a successful downtown that serves as a hub for arts, entertainment, and community activities. So everyone here tonight and online can recognize that the city has taken steps forward in that. So like, for instance, the streetscape, it's a cornerstone investment in creating economic to grow. So that's been something that the city continually works on. Goal number two, recognition of Kingman as the center for outdoor recreation in northern Arizona. So just recently, council approved a Trails Master Plan. You know, that's geared towards that component. And so that will lead to better quality of life and growth, tourism visitors. And those folks that visit us have a higher spending income. And so they'll stay longer, they'll spend more, and that generates revenue for the city. Goal number three, a community where people want to live and visitors want to return. You know, these are like really, you know, great thoughts. A lot of time and energy went into these goals when that council set this out. So some major cornerstone projects that will help us move this goal forward, the I-40 interchange projects, road improvements. You guys talked tonight about road improvements. How do we make that better? Those are important factors when it comes to livability in your community. So figuring out how to resolve those issues are very important. You guys are working on that. Vibrant downtown visitor attraction projects. We bring those projects to you guys almost on a regular basis now, where we're looking at opportunities for visitors to come, take pictures that represent Kingman, and get them to stay longer. And we are, we do have a more focused on retail growth. And we've recently presented that in a recent meeting, so that's been important. Goal number four, a well-educated workforce and talent pipeline with skills today's employers and tomorrow's employers need. So us as the city, we support Mojave County Workforce Board initiatives, Mojave Community College Manufacturing Training Center, which recently had a ribbon cutting out, future expansion of degree programs at Mojave Community College, the WAVE CTED programs, and high school apprenticeship programs. Goal number five, a diverse employment base of employers that pay well, thereby reducing poverty in Kingman. The city is currently focused on a Phase II industrial park. You know, it is vital, and the council is very, very much involved in that. City management's involved in that, and city staff's involved in that. You know, the eventual completion of that will definitely diversify the employment base. So of these many goals, you know, that align, there are two more goals that were part of this. And I think they particularly apply to this concept. And when you look at it, it's like, wow, why did they, you know, do that back then? You know, it's just very interesting. And that is an energetic entrepreneurial culture and sustained funding that supports collaborative and aggressive economic development programs. Well, really, that's what this is. You know, in addition to the workforce, in addition to those other things, this is something that's, you know, a lot of people would think are out of the box, you know. But it's put in our community, really thinking about economic development. And where are we going to get the future tax revenues to pay for all the other stuff that we do? You know, the police, the fire, the other departments, our roads. All that stuff comes from economic development. Without that growth, we don't have any of the other stuff. So I talked a lot, we don't have a lot of slides, but, you know, I'll get into that. So the partnerships that we talked about, City of Kingman Economic Development, Western Arizona Vocational Educational Career Technical Education District, or WAVE CTED, the Mojave Community College Small Business Development Center, MCC SBDC. And then the other component of this is the business aspect, the shared spaces that we would then rent to businesses starting up. And so, you know, this, this shared co-work space concept really provides a dynamic space for business incubation, equipped with modern amenities that will attract entrepreneurs, foster a vibrant community innovative growth. This arrangement encourages interaction between entrepreneurs, investors, industry experts, educators, students, apprenticeships, training providers. And it will promote the development of new ideas, accelerate business growth, and create future working professionals that will stay in our community. This is just a rendering that, you know, of a building similar to the one down in, down in, down in Havasu. Our facility will be, you know, larger than that because we have other partners involved. So, you know, it's not going to really look like this, but, you know, we were excited to kind of do some renderings. So the purpose is to stimulate local economic growth, job creation, attract and retain businesses, improve the quality of life. Our needs, economic development needs, our four to five offices, storage room, obviously the flex space, meeting rooms, community hub, workshop and community network events that we can do. Currently, the Economic Development Department is downtown and out at the industrial park, really in the unincorporated area. We do feel that there's going to be some time before a lot of the Phase II and things happen. So there's going to be a lot to do on the retail front. There's going to be a lot to do, you know, in town and around town. So really feel like having a location in town eventually would really be, you know, conducive with the economic development team. So for startups, you know, just a list of these things, again, that it would allow, affordable flexibility rental options. You don't have to go into a long-term lease. You know, a new person getting ready to start up doesn't know, is it going to work? Not going to work. Might be tied into this long-term lease. You know, and then we set up the leases where, you know, they're there for so long, and then they, you know, move on and they grow their business. And then we get new potential users in and out. So it's going to be a professional setting. You've got things like podcasts, photography, videography. It's a collaborative work environment where we'll be with the college, SBDC, you know, WAVE JTED, you know, a component of that, and those students being able to see, and potentially those students mentoring under a new startup business, you know, and there's going to be some collaborations there. The parcel that we looked at, we spoke with, really what, you know, the team, the individuals that we talked with, WAVE CTED and the college. The site off of East Andy Vine and Fairgrounds Boulevard, that parcel adjacent to the Lewis Kingman Park is a good potential parcel to start developing. It's been talked about over the years in many different type of projects. This, we feel, could be a catalyst project to other potential facilities that could come into a complex like this. So just, you know, with that in mind. So at this time, what I'd like to do is invite Superintendent of WAVE CTED, Amy West, talk a little bit about their program, discuss what they're up to and how this project might fit within this, this concept.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, everybody else. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this idea to you. Not everybody is as familiar with WAVE as they may be with some other entities that are going to be talking tonight. So I did want to give you a little background on WAVE. In 2008, we took WAVE to the voters. And we basically asked them the question, do you want high school students to have more career training opportunities? And they said yes. We had a fairly good turnout, we had a fairly good response. So we have only been a CTED, a JTED, either way, we answered either, since 2009. And we were one of the last areas in the state to actually have this type of joint district. So we kind of felt like we were not capitalizing on all the things that we could that some other areas of the state were able to capitalize on. So having this has been a great, I think, addition to our area. WAVE operates in Kingman, Havasu, Bullhead, and Parker. And we can serve any of the students in high school and for one year after graduation in certain programs that, I mean, they can be online students, homeschool students, charter school students, or public school students. So that's kind of nice because those people pay taxes, and that's what helps fund us in our state. So we can serve all of those. We operate in three ways. We partner with the high schools in those cities, and we help them with costs for salaries and benefits for maybe an instructor, labs, industry certifications. The other things we can do is we can own and operate our own programs. So we do have some of our own programs. We partner with the City of Kingman and Chief Jaeger to have a fire academy. Not every student is going to be a firefighter that goes through that. But education is something that you can't ever take away. All of them are going to benefit from what they do. Chief Jaeger has benefited from employees. So that's been a very positive program that we've done. We have a culinary campus in Lake Havasu. Our students do 500 hours a year approximately of community service while they're in high school. And those employers take those students, they're calling us all the time. Can you help me fill this position? So we do have some success that we've already seen with those types of programs collaborating with business and industry partners running our own programs. And then the third way we operate is we can pay tuition and fees to the community college. We have a long list of programs that we work with, everything from those trades areas of electrical, HVAC, and welding to healthcare careers, medical assisting, nursing. electrical, HVAC, and welding, to healthcare careers, medical assisting, nursing, phlebotomy, to business, AJS, fire, those types of things, computers that we pay for at the college. Currently, we reside at the county building. We have two cubicles, and we've kind of outgrown that space. So we have been saving funding over the years, knowing that this might be our next step, logical next step, to put a facility together. To get this process started, we did have stakeholder meetings in all of our communities. That resulted in our consultant kind of indicating that the best place to maybe start, since we already have a little footprint in Havasu, the best place to start was in Kingman. And that was based on the things that are happening in Kingman, the relationships that we have in Kingman, the trajectory that economic development is on, things like that. So they, that was their recommendation, was to start with a building in Kingman, with perhaps in a couple of years doing something maybe in the Bullhead city area. So that was how we started. There are a lot of different ways that we can help students be successful. A four-year degree is not the only way. We can get associate's degrees, we can do apprenticeships, we can do certifications. Our goal at WAVE is to help students have a stepping stone. Sometimes we see students that maybe don't have the opportunities that are provided to them, they maybe have generational issues, maybe come from families that say, yeah, it's not our thing. And so if we can get them started in high school and create that pipeline from the high school to the community college, to our business and industry partners, and create those things that give them the confidence and the character to say, huh, I can earn that certificate or that credential, or maybe I will go on and get a degree later. If we can help them, we're going to change things for generations to come. We're going to improve our community, we're going to make places where kids can earn sustainable wages, and it's just beneficial to everybody for, for all those right reasons. That being said, when we do this, we want to maximize those opportunities. We want to make sure that we are utilizing the space in a collaborative manner, that we are maximizing our funding and maximizing everything that students can take advantage of. I think that's about all that I have to say. I'll leave with introducing Dr. Klippenstein. He's going to come up and talk a little bit about SBDC, but you will often hear in meetings and different things like, oh, students these days. Have you ever heard that? And it kind of is followed with a little bit of negativity. I'm here to tell you that students these days are pretty awesome. We have wonderful kids in our community, and they want so bad to do the right thing, and if we can provide them those opportunities, I think that that will pay us back in the long run. So thank you for the time, I appreciate it, and we'll be here if you have any questions.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and City Manager Walsh. Given props. Oh, let me just keep moving forward. I'm Stacy Klippenstein, the proud president of Mojave Community College, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to be able to join these two wonderful people on this potential joint partnership and program. It's a very collaborative process for Mojave Community College to participate in something with economic development, the advancement there, as well as JTEDWAVE, and the work that they do is always something that we want to jump on and see what we can do. Stepping back just a few minutes or a few, a few years, we started our facilities master planning process with our board about two years ago, and we completed that, and we're in the midst now of taking a look at our first phase. Well, part of that, too, is with CTEDWAVE conducting and taking a look at their facilities, plans, and needs. It seemed to us as a great way to kind of come together and join together and have those, those dialogue. Well, with that, that then caused Amy and others to take a look at, and working with the city, to say, hey, maybe there's some space, there's some land, there's whatever else that we can all work together and create something that could be purposeful, but also benefit economic viability, economic vitality of the, of the community, workforce development needs, and continue to connect what Mojave Community College does with our programs, as well as connect better and improve our relationship with CTEDWAVE with specific programs here in Kingman. So we see this is, for us, Mojave Community College is a no-brainer to say, how can we really make this work in some ways? For us, what we saw is not only a joint potential educational space with WAVE, JTED, and what they will do in that area, but also to take a look at the entrepreneurial spirit of the, the ideas around the Center for Business Incubation and so forth. So as you're looking at that small business startup, that somebody needs that space for three months to figure things out, to have them there in a space is incredible, to create that is great, but boy, to have them right next to Small Business Development Council, somebody can help walk them through those next steps, to us, we see is extremely valuable. Our SBDC office, if you're not familiar, is one of 10 across the state. All 10 community college districts receive state money that comes in from the feds, goes to the state through Maricopa Community College District, and then we receive a portion, we have to do a match. Our SBDC offices right now are actually located in our Beale Street Center downtown, along with our Kingman Chamber of Commerce. Everybody knows Becky Fosson, I think she's behind me making, behind me making faces. She is, isn't she? Okay, moving on then. But, but we do have a collaborative partnership, and just to let you know, one of the ideas we had with generating that Beale Street Center at 309 Beale Street, creating that and working with the chamber, and having our SBDC offices, we actually had two offices down there that were dedicated to a business incubation. But we outgrew it, outgrew our goals and needs pretty fast. And so those two spaces are actually being used. So we saw very early on that there could be a neat, neat, synergistic style of option here with this. So for us to partner and to work with the city on this potential, for us, would just be, again, a no-brainer, would be something that we see fits very, very well with our SBDC office. So when we take a look at it, we can offer the confidential business counseling for small business development. Our needs in this space would be definitely three office spaces and storage. They have to be confidential, they have to be soundproof and all of that because of business startup and the work that they do. One-on-one consultation space, as well as space for training sessions. We can work in conjunction with the city on those spaces, and also with CTEDWAVE on those spaces. And also, we would be looking at shared educational space with WAVE, so looking at what they might want and need with their, plus their offices, plus their, their educational space. Where could we team up on a space that can be flexible, multipurpose, where we can bring in short-term training with them, longer-term training, but really take a lead from them and what they need, and where we can collaborate, improve our collaboration through all entities, and enhance our visibility for our SBDC office right there on Andy Divine, in its conjunction with this business incubation startup, in conjunction with CTEDWAVE. Again, it's another visible spot like we are downtown, so we believe we won't lose that visibility, and we would have a broader, better connection with the purpose behind our SBDC. So I will stop there and turn it back over to Bennett, and thank you very much for having me here tonight.
I was feeling for a second you guys were going to clap for him and not for me, but I get him to laugh for me a little more. But just in closing, we did want to not leave you guys just, well, funding, you know, you know, these are things that we're going to look at, but we've started looking at some of that stuff. We started some ideas rolling, and so things like, you know, these partnerships when they come in, because we're the city, on our property with our facility, waiving permit fees, land contribution for the facility. An idea that I bounced off of Tim, and depending on what happens with the Electrical Vehicle Museum, but if we were to sell that, and, and that concept were to work out, there could be some potential for, you know, some of those funds being used to build this facility. There's also viable financing options that have just now come back around to being available through the, what is the Greater Arizona Development Authority, or GADA. GADA assists Arizona communities in development of public infrastructure projects that enhance community and economic development. Some examples of these past projects financed through GADA are 14 million to the town of Buckeye for a municipal complex, 11 million to the town of Queen Creek for a library, 3.6 million to Williams for a justice center, and 19.9 million for the Library and Recreation Center in Cottonwood. So these, this, this funding mechanism went away in 2014. It's actually come back around with some of the changes, and so there's things that can be looked at. And so that, that's kind of what we're, you know, starting out the discussion, and our, our hope is that, you know, you will guide us in, in moving that discussion forward so that we can bring back some of these, these options for you guys to look at. So with that, open it up to questions and discussion.
Questions for Bennett. Counselor Eric.
Can I just say how excited I am for this? I was part of a co-op like this down in Tucson. We had multiple companies, or kids, in college that didn't have laptops that opened, you know, a photo processing app, or actually licensing to that photo processing app because they didn't have the cash, or the technology for a studio for a vlog or something. And some of them have turned into multimillion-dollar companies because of the mentorship and, and support that they've got. My real big question is, do you have a cost estimate on what a building like this would cost?
So we, we did, before, you know, looking at these other partnerships and, and the size of the building, that facility, you know, was roughed out at about, you know, not including land costs, was around $3 million.
Okay. And, and just to kind of say, like, it would be so cool to finally have somewhere, and when I talk to friends of mine, and I'm like, oh, down in Tucson, we had this co-op, but like, if we finally had one here, and from my understanding, it would take all of the, the resources like, like MCC's CBD program in one building, along with all of your department in one building, along with WAVE in one building, and put everything together, so you have that mentorship, you have the resources, and you have the next steps ahead. So once you reach this milestone, what, how do you grow from there? Is that correct? Everyone together?
Yeah, to your point, how, how great would it be to be able to walk down the hall, bring them in to the conference room, and have that discussion right away on how do you build that?
And one thing that also gets overlooked in places like this is also the networking provided by having your neighbor as motivated and in the same mindset you are. I've worked with these types of things in the past, and with the, they do hackathons. They, when you start something like that, you get people talking about ideas just naturally because they're all excited, and more things sprout from this than, I'm going to ramble. This is so exciting.
When, when we did the tour down in Havasu, that, that topic got brought up with the existing tenants that are there.
Thanks, Counselor. Any other questions for Bennett? Counselor Savage?
Just a couple of quick questions. You're going to be taking up parking space. Is Josh okay with that?
No, in all seriousness.
Is this going to be a public-private operation? How's it planning on being operated?
So I, I think, because we'd all be kind of private, I don't know, what is WAVE? Or Public, 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 so it could be the three Ps? Public, Public, Public. But you'd have that component of us potentially leasing to businesses.
Right. So how's that revenue going to be shared between the three of you?
Those would be discussions that I think would have to go look like. So the current structure down in, didn't Havasu is because they built the facility, they leased the facility, and the revenues from that go to pay for operations of the facility, which actually, from what I understand, it, it actually pays for itself at this point.
Last question, is MCC involved in the one in Havasu?
No, we are not in Havasu.
So this is the rubber, we're adding to the tire.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm very supportive of this collaboration. Would it be true to say that this joint venture partnership agreement with the three of us all coming together presents more of an opportunity for us to capitalize on grants when we're all working together?
There's opportunities to submit on grants as a group, depending on timing, when those grants are available. I, I think also, and we kind of hit on a little bit, but a lot of times you'll put a conference room and it won't get used, you know, for a long time, but by adding everybody together, you schedule that conference room. By, by, you know, the other stuff that'll be in the facility will be a better use of something that's created than sitting around not being used. And so everyone will have access to those facilities through a program that you sign up and, and register for. So I think that is a big component of savings that you see.
And then I just wanted to, I'm, I'm interested when the numbers start to come in, as far as, you know, what, what's the financial burden going to be on the city? What does that look like, the operating costs once it's constructed? You know, I'm, I'm going to be very interested to see how those come in.
Yes, I, I will be very interested, too.
But I, I completely support this. I'm, I can't think of two better partners. I know that MCC gives back to our community, and the things that they are doing in our community, since Dr. Klippenstein came on board, is absolutely life-changing. So I, I couldn't think of a better partner, and I love what WAVE CTED does with our youth, and we are going to need those youth as we are going to start creating jobs in the certain sectors that we're going to start creating with our, our development. So very, very excited for this, too. I, I don't know if I'm quite as excited as, as Counselor Eric, but I'm, I'm right there with him. So, yeah, I, I support this project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anybody else? Any other Counselor? Counselor Ward?
Basically, more comment than anything else. I'm probably the least tech savvy guy, tech savvy guy up here. But when we toured that facility in Havasu, I was impressed, and, and I think anybody that's on council should definitely take that tour. It was, the, the people were actually there working when we were there, and you could see how the whole concept worked. And that's all I got. I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor, Sally.
Bennett, you know that I, I absolutely support this. I really appreciate the fact that our economic development plan hasn't sat on the shelf, and you guys have worked so hard, and, and a lot of things have been accomplished, and we're getting to the point where we can do these aggressive, I think that was the word you used, aggressive projects.
It was the word in the plan.
Yeah. Well, you reminded us that it, it's in there. This, this, along with the partnerships, it, it's just such a win for our community, and so you have my full support, and I can't wait to see this come to fruition. It's going to be great for the community.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I'd like to add that I would also support this project, and the two partners we're going to partner up with are awesome, but I mean, how could we go wrong, really? We need to definitely pursue this as far as we can. That's all I have.
Okay, and finally me. I think when Dr. Klippenstein mentioned about out of space already down here for offices, and I was thinking, Becky just wants more office space, the chamber does, so. But anyway, I think it's a great collaboration. In fact, I was counting the offices that you have there. How many offices were you thinking as far as being available to lease out to entrepreneurs for short-term?
In our numbers, we were looking at around 10. And then also, you'd have open desk space where somebody can come in and lease a desk as they're coming through town, you know, and then you'd have conference rooms that they could book if they happen to have a meeting coming through town, so that they could go onto the app, book the rooms. It's very tech-driven, so the management is less intrusive.
Okay. No, I was looking at this building, and I was counting the office spaces and such, and already with what WAVE CTED needs, your, your department?
Yeah, that's not big enough.
No, I was going to say right away, I know this is just a concept, and we have to crawl before we can walk and then run, but already you need a bigger building.
Yeah, and how that design lays out, that's what we'd like to take a look at, and I think there's, with, with WAVE CTED, those discussions we've already had, depending on how this conversation goes, where we'll go back and we'll, we'll put, pen to paper in regards to that size of that facility, really look at that, and hopefully maybe get some, you know, some, some drawings and layout of potentially how that might look on that, on that property.
Well, I think you've heard from council, we are all in support of this, this project, so once again, move forward.
So appreciate, appreciate that support, and, you know, would look for bringing something back to you. So I, I think we just need a, a motion.
Do we need a motion?
Is that what Annie says?
I just say, I don't think we need a motion on this. And Bennett, thank you. Dr. Klippenstein, Amy, thank you again for being here and presenting this. Okay, item 5C, acceptance of the Downtown Business Extension Zone Guidelines. This item is for consideration and approval of the Business Extension Zone BEZ for the businesses in the downtown area whose buildings have a zero setback from the city right of way. This guidelines' purpose is to facilitate the creation of a BEZ This guideline's purpose is to facilitate the creation of a BEZ that enlivens and enhances public life while protecting the public interest. It will provide direction on design material choices and space configuration to allow private development to encroach within the public right-of-way to extend their business activities. Staff recommends approval. Jack, good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Long time no see. As it is shown, this is the revised business extension zone that we're bringing back to you guys. Just to provide a little background to those that may be watching, with the redevelopment of the downtown area, there's additional sidewalk space that's available for use. And currently, if you were going to encroach in that, it would require a substantial encroachment permit, which requires council approval. There wasn't any specific guidance for downtown. So, we started to develop this business extension zone. And that extension zone is for businesses that may serve food or alcohol, have pop-up events, could be retail space. And we wanted to make it available for people to use, those businesses to use. So, I have a slide up. We'll get to that. That's the last piece of the presentation or the conversation that we'll have. But in your packet, you guys have the most recent updated version of the business extension zone. We did multiple rounds of public engagement, and we had council feedback and also staff feedback on different items within that BEZ guide. And so, all of those were addressed. There were some that were specific to signage, and, you know, the types of amenities are out on the street. And so, the goal of the program, the goal of this is to do two things. One, streamline the application process, make it administrative to where they put in the application, gets reviewed, and then, you know, they can move forward with their extension a little quicker than it would happen with a business, or I'm sorry, a substantial encroachment. The second half is, you know, maintaining some cohesiveness and safety for downtown. And so, these guidelines will do that. It talks specifically about accessible pathways, and there's some ingress egress components to that related to the business encroachment and the business itself. Talks about some specifics on what the overall look of those materials will be. And that's to provide, again, a nice cohesive aesthetic downtown area that's, that is, you know, safe for pedestrians. And so, all those comments were incorporated into this. One thing I do want to point out is there were no new regulations that came up with this. So, we already have current city ordinances, be it for nuisance or noise or whatever, and we didn't, we didn't, we're not asking to create anything else. So, enforcement of keeping your area clean and safe would be done as they typically would already inside of the existing city ordinances. Mike Garmin was on vacation, so Jason had voted him to be the administrator of this program. So, the permits have been changed from the draft you saw before, and we'll actually go through engineering, which made sense because they handle the right-of-way permits anyways. Which I guess I should have covered, these business extension zones encroach into the city right-of-way. So, downtown is pretty unique compared to the rest of the city. It says zero setback. The front of the building is on the property line. So, it's not like other businesses where you have some footage from the right-of-way back to the front of the building where you may have parking lots or sidewalk or other access. So, this is a little, downtown is unique, and if you look at the area boundaries, we expanded those to cover those. It's eligible, anything inside of that, if you have the sidewalk with to accommodate that encroachment. We did keep six feet of sidewalk. That is even what our sidewalk standards are in those commercial areas. So, again, that's to make sure we have good egress or movement throughout the area. The one piece that I would like to talk to you guys about, it came up in the last council presentation, is related to the gift clause and what the fees may be for the program. Deputy Director Mullin was nice enough to pull up some examples from other cities for me, and that's what I have for you here this evening. And so, there are cities that have a application and a use fee that's flat. It doesn't, it's not inclusive of any square footage or use area. This is limited to in front of their business. So, if your business is 40 feet wide, in most places, we have nine foot plus or minus. So, you'd have a 40-foot by nine-foot area that would be able to extend your business into for those operations. Some places, if you look in here, they had a square foot price. So, if you had that nine-by-40 area, was it 360 square feet, you would pay whatever the square footage price was. And so, I was hoping to get a little bit of feedback from council, because we will have to bring this item back to you. If you look on page seven, I just referenced the City of Kingman fee schedule. And so, we would make an update there, bring back the business extension guidelines, and adopt those through resolution at a next meeting. But again, I was hoping to get some feedback. There had been conversation in some of the public outreach pieces that council had participated in or members had participated in on those fees, and I wanted to see what your guys' thoughts were. And so, with that, I'll try and answer any questions and see what you think on the fees.
Thanks, Jack.
Mayor, could I just comment on the gift clause portion, just for part of the conversation? Because I'm always the buzzkill. So, the gift clause is basically, we can't give away things for free for private businesses. So, this idea of what we're looking for is because these businesses are going to be operating on city property, city right-of-way, earning an income or generating some revenue, we have to be able to be compensated in some manner for that because we're giving them our property. So, that's the idea where the gift clause comes in, that they have to pay to use this property as well as obviously, we need insurance to protect the city from any incidents that may happen on the property. So, that's all I needed to say.
Questions, council? Who wants to start? Vice Counsel Savely?
So, this fee is going to be annually then, right? They're basically paying rent on that piece of property.
So, that's some of the examples that are here. You have an application fee, and then, in some instances, they have a annual use fee. So, yes, the permit renewal itself, one of the comments that was received internally was making sure, and that was related to insurance and some other items that need to be taken care of, was to have that pop up annually to where that triggers to renew the particular pieces like insurance or maybe an inspection that needs to be done.
Okay, that makes sense. I, I'm wondering, right now, it looks like there are some businesses that are using our barricades to create these spaces. Once we approve this, I imagine that those barricades either have to come down or they have to start paying, they have to go through this process. Is that right? I mean, we're gonna, we have to enforce this equally throughout this whole area.
And we will. And honestly, this was pushed up. We were trying to get it done, but we moved it a lot quicker. What the barricades that are out there now that were the cities, when the job was completed, we were getting ready for the ribbon cutting in the first Friday. And we had quite honestly impacted the businesses for a period of time, you know, months at a time. And so, worked with Mr. Garmin from engineering, and we let them borrow our barricades. They did temporary encroachment permits, and that way, we could get them back on the sidewalk and get them back into full operation, waiting for this to be done. And then, those had a shorter timeframe than normally would happen. And so, they'll have to come in and go through the process. And two of the businesses down there that had those barricades, I've actually personally spoke to both of them, and, you know, they were working through trying to get design and who would construct those for them. So, they're certainly on their radar, and it's not their intent by any means to leave those barricades down there. But some of it was waiting to get the final guidelines approved.
I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad we did that. We partnered with them to help them get those spaces back and get them back whole right from the get-go. And so, then, I'm assuming everybody that's using them knows that this is coming and there will be changes that was temporary.
Anybody that's using them, I've spoke to personally and made sure that they were aware of that. But again, we just, we impacted them throughout the project and wanted to get them back out and in full swing. Because we were in that time of year where people use that outside business extension, especially when we have first Fridays and other special events downtown, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Jack, do you have a starting point for fees that you're wanting to get us, get our opinion on? Or, I was trying to find something, and you know, I tabbed on some of the different, and didn't take me anywhere.
No, I didn't. I honestly didn't have a recommendation. The comment that I had back in the outreach we did or one of the public meetings was, you know, affordable. What is fair compensation? I honestly don't have a great example for you, because if you, as you look here, you know, five cents to a dollar per square foot. I really don't have a recommendation, and I apologize for that. I was hoping to get some feedback from council.
Mayor, can I step in on this one?
Yeah, Counselor.
I really like the square footage, because it's not just the main drag of downtown, but it also has the side streets which have different variable sidewalks, correct?
Correct.
So, like, this road right here might be thinner or less than nine feet. I had a question on access, like, do they, when you did the math, you said it's about nine feet, then you times it by 40, it's a 360. They have the full area, but does that mean that they can put barricades all the way around? Or do they need to leave a way to walk by?
So, if you look, and I should have.
And I looked at the examples provided at the back of the packet. It looks like, yes, right? I just wanted to clarify it.
So, on page, and I apologize, I should have pulled this up earlier.
Page three, isn't it, Jack?
Page five.
Five.
There is a example of what that looks like in typical, there's a couple of buildings that have a couple of feet
Yeah, page five.
of setback, but not very much. And so, what you have is nine foot from the face of the building or the property line toward the roadway. And then, you have a six-foot pedestrian through zone, and so, that six foot has to remain open continuously.
Got it.
Past that, the tree planters is a good, good starting point for that. The tree planters are four foot wide adjacent to the curb line. And so, there's some amenities and things that go in, but that six foot always remains open.
So, if they don't have that six feet in general, they can't apply for this?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I don't want to, I would like to see it not be a burden on the customers. I would like, I mean, on the businesses, keep it cheap so that they can promote more business, maybe spend those dollars on advertising to get more sales revenue to benefit the city. I would hate to be a burden on a business and see this as like a money-making opportunity for the city. So, that was just my feedback.
Mayor, can I comment?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes.
I was just going to say, I wouldn't call it's not a money-making for the city. It's a compensation for the using of city property to generate an income.
Thank you for the clarification.
Not a problem.
But square footage does make sense.
Well, when you look at the, for example, on this BEZ fee examples, the last two, Miami, Florida, and Austin, Texas, we could do something like that, which is a flat application fee and $10 inspection fee. I mean, that would be right, Carl, that, that was not even by square footage. It's, so, there are a couple, that's one way to look at it.
So, Counselor Walker?
I personally like the Austin, Texas one, $100 application fee, or $200 annual. As long as they keep their application in every year, that fee would go away, correct, after their first time? So, it'd just be a $200 a year after that?
Yeah, that's what that's, yeah. Carl, would that cover what we need?
I don't think we're setting a fee tonight.
No, no, but we're just giving Jack some ideas.
And then, we can throw it back, I'm going to throw it to Tina, and Tina's going to be able to generate how that's going to properly work. And we might need to just establish what that value is. And it's not like, you got the attorney. We can be careful about what the market value is of that land and try and justify having less than that by saying what kind of a public benefit it is. But we have to be careful about how far we go. So, I think what we can try and do is just make, see what the council's ideas are towards this type of situation, and we can come back with some more specifics for you to make that decision.
Okay. Counselor Walker, anymore?
Yeah, I'd say just keep it as simple as we can where we're not wasting a bunch of staff time. I mean, we need to make sure they have insurance, but we don't need to be out there measuring how much space they're taking. You know, honestly, I don't, I don't think we need to waste a lot of time. So, I would say keep it as simple as we can.
Good point. Counselor Savage?
My question is, with the liquor board, so the companies that will have liquor, will they have to apply to get a permanent extension of premises?
They will. So, liquor licenses are handled through the state.
Right.
We do receive the applications, so, Annie's already commented on that, and those are incorporated into the guidelines itself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions for Jack?
I just.
Comments, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to confirm. So, we are going to move, they're going to have the nine feet in front of their business only. They're not going to, so, I guess what I would like to see is make sure that it's as close to their frontage as possible so that we don't have a split. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, so the walk.
Yeah, so we don't allow the extension to go all the way out and then a walk-through to where, I would like to see that. I'm fine with the Austin, Texas, you know, version.
Yeah, okay. So, what Annie has pulled up here actually is on page five of the guideline in your packet. And so, that actually doesn't allow for the frontage to go all the way to the back of the curb, I think is what you were.
Yes. I just, I just want to make sure that we have had enough public outreach so that it's understood by the businesses that that's, that's the extent of how far out they can go. And I know I've sat in on quite a few of the public meetings that the downtown businesses were invited to, and that was talked about. So, I just, I just want to make sure that that's clarified so we have a clear walking path for pedestrians.
Great, yeah. And again, it's incorporated here. You're right, we did talk about it in the businesses. The businesses that have encroachments out currently, we've talked to all of them individually. And, you know, one of them had actually held back a little bit short even from the six-foot requirement. So, I don't see that as an issue right now, but that's something that would come along with the annual renewal, because we would make sure, and even before then, if we're downtown, how many of us are downtown weekly, monthly? If you see them, we can talk to the businesses. But I don't anticipate any issue with that.
So, if somebody, my next question is, how permanent can these structures be? Because we just did all those amazing enhancements to our downtown district. I would hate to see the integrity of the project hurt because of this extension. So, how permanent are these going to be?
The intent was for them not to be permanent. That was honestly part of the issue that we had before for maintenance. They were, they were built in a permanent means, and we didn't have the ability to move those, take care of sidewalk issues, and then put those back. And so, we have written these. They're not anchored to the sidewalk, to the poles, to, you know, any of the curb, any of the assets out there. The examples that are provided, there's one business down there that's already done it. They use like a weighted barrel and put their fence on it, and that's what the intent is. And that's, there's some, some specific pictures showing that. And bolting or anchoring to the sidewalks is actually prohibited in the program just for that reason. Because even if you fill the hole, it's still there.
Okay. Thank you.
I like that idea too, Jack, with what's already there. So, keep up the good work on that. I also support the Austin, Texas. I think, as Counselor Eric said, keeping it affordable, keeping it simple, like has been mentioned by Counselor Walker. And I think that's a great starting point. So, hopefully, that gives you enough ideas where to go from this, and you'll be bringing it back to us.
It does. I appreciate the feedback on that, and we'll see you when we come back with the resolution.
Okay.
Mayor Watkins, if I may, just to give a little bit of, just to clarify, just provide a little bit of expectation. Because this will be a new fee, there is that 60-day notice roughly publication that we'll have to give before we can actually bring it back. So, just so council's aware of the timeline for setting those new fees, that's kind of where we're at.
Right.
So, I know you have some businesses that are waiting for this information. Are they, are they going to wait that 60 days, or are they going to be able to get started?
So, the way we've been, and that's a great question, the way we've been addressing the businesses in the interim is through a temporary, and Jack can give me the right. Encroachment permit. Temporary encroachment permit, thank you. So, we can continue to work under that temporary encroachment permit until we get this ordinance established with the fees.
Okay, knowing that these are the guidelines that we approve of, we're really just stuck now on what the fee will be. Is that, is that right? Is that what you guys, yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Right. And they, and they. Right, and they, and they, these businesses are aware that there will be fees coming, but in the meantime, it still allows them time to operate and do, through a temporary encroachment permit.
That's correct, a- and I think, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll go that route. We can work on as far as bringing back, back the fees. Um, it may, listening to the discussion, it, it sounds like council's in support of the guidelines that we have. We can bring them all back at the same time for, for final approval. And, and basically what we will do, excuse me, going forward is, is base our temporary encroachment permits on the guidelines that, that we've presented tonight and, and go from there.
Okay, thanks, Manager Walsh.
I have one more question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, so as far as when we adopt the fees, whatever those fees will be, then you go back to all those temporaries and they actually solidify an actual application, pay a fee, and their time starts from that point forward?
We can look at that a number of ways, but you, but yes, that would be one option. As far as, um, establishing the fees, here's now this. We could also allow, however council wants to do it, uh, basically grace period of, okay, these fees go into effect on this date, y- you know, just to, however council would like to proceed with that. But yeah, we have a way of setting that specific.
And also are there insurance, uh, requirements even though they're in, in a temporary permit?
The insurance requirement were part of the temporary permit. The insurance requirement here, they actually have to provide in working with risk management. They, they, the business has to prove, provide proof of insurance for their business and that covers their extension. And, uh, like I say, that was, that was, uh, worked out with the risk management side.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Eric, quick question. Are you comfortable with those fees? Is that too exorbitant? I mean, cause I, you know.
No, uh, that's fine. I was just, um, my, the reason I mention square footage is some people don't have nine feet. Some people do, um, some people will put out chairs, some, and tables, some will just put out an A sign. And as long as it's affordable and simplicity is best for me, yeah, I, I would also go with Austin as long as it's not complicated and two hundred dollars hypothetically, um, is very reasonable for a whole year, in my opinion. But I mean, yes, simplicity.
Great. Once again, counsel, I appreciate everybody's coming together on this and giving Jack some, uh, you know, some ideas on where to go with it. So, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Item five D, request for exception sewer extension sun, extension Sunshine RV Park. Section seven point two of the utility regulations state that a public sewer extension shall be required to extend across the total frontage of the property to be served in instances where due to topography, location, or surroundings, engineering design shows that the sewer line cannot be extended further to, to serve additional properties. The city engineer may allow the developer to end the line without crossing the total frontage. Applicant Jack Wade wishes to connect the Sunshine Mobile Home and RV Park to the city sewer system. In order to connect, the regulations require him to extend the sewer across the full frontage of his property, about one thousand feet. Mr. Wade is requesting to extend the sewer only a hundred and seventy-five feet to tie into the RV park, extension, RV park. Extension number one is shown in exhibit A. This accommodation would limit future sewer connections and require upstream properties to extend across Mr. Wade's property. The Municipal Utility Commission recommended approval of the request four to zero at their July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name's Daniel Gutierrez. I'm here for Mike Garmin's absence, vacation, so. More information on this is Mr. Wade wants to connect his mobile home and RV park to the city sewer and regulations, or city regulations require him to do the full frontage extension. But, um, the previous city owner, city engineer allowed him to pursue a different extension alignment, a more cost-effective and potentially accommodate more future sewer connections. Mr. Wade hired Mohave Engineering to provide a set of construction plans for the sewer extension, which were, which were approved by the city. He included one extension and another extension to shown, as shown in exhibit eight, one and two. This option would have provided for future expansion of the sewer line beyond Mr. Wade's property. But since then, Mr. Wade, his funding situation has changed, so he's elected to just proceed with extension number one. Um, this would, um, be only the one hundred and seventy-five feet to his property and would obviously accommodate fewer sewer extensions. As mentioned before, this has already been presented to the Municipal Utility Commission and has been voted four to zero to allow him to construct extension number one. Uh, staff is recommending that we move on with this approval and we're seeking council, council's approval.
Okay. Council, questions?
Mayor, this is my commission that I'm liaison for.
Thank you.
And, uh, one of the major reasons why, um, Muck decided to approve this was due to it being a voluntary action. It wasn't necessary. Their currently service was septic and who knows whether that's gonna be twenty years or ten years or forty years before it fails. Um, due to the nature of it being voluntary, um, he, uh, the applicant, um, if I remember correctly, wanted to get the property ready to hand off to future generations, um, so they didn't have to deal with the problem in the future and also, you know, benefit the city a little bit. Um, I think it's very key that it's noted that it's a voluntary action, that he doesn't necessarily have to. And that was the main reason why Muck, um, okayed this one.
Thank you, Counselor. Comments or questions from council? Okay. So once again, staff recommends approval, or where does staff stand on this?
Yeah, we're, we approved, or I apologize. Staff is approving the exception to only construct exhibit number one.
Okay, so.
Suggested notions to.
If I may, I believe staff's recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe staff's recommendation to Muck was initially to decline, correct?
That's not what my.
Okay, that's not, um, the, I guess I'll, I'll put it, uh, my, I'm torn on this item. I, I do like the addition of these additional, uh, all of these RVs being connected to our sewer line, I, I think is a, a great benefit. It's, it's one less septic system that we have to worry about failure in the future. Um, my concern is, is that if any of the, the properties upstream of him, which in looking at the map, there's five to six properties that are upstream of him that if any of them were required to connect to sewer or, or wanted to connect to sewer, they would be required to extend that sewer line nine hundred and sixty feet across his property, which they would not receive a payback for because, uh, uh, until he requested a building permit or, or somebody on that property requested a building permit. So, um, staff did work, as, as Daniel mentioned, previously staff worked with him under the, the previous city engineer and came up with a solution that cut the sewer line extension down by half. Um, he was able to extend to his property, connect it, and then on Prescott, you see that other line, which is about four hundred and fifty feet, which then provides sewer to those, that sewer connection upstream. So I, I appreciate the proactiveness of, of the applicant. Um, but i- if his septic were to fail today, he would be required to make this connection and extend it all the way across his property. So, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm torn on this item. I do like the idea of, of connecting the, this RV park to the, to the sewer system. Again, there are only five or six customers upstream that would, would not have that, that opportunity to connect should they wish to connect to sewer. Um, so it's, it's, I guess basically a question of, you know, they are larger properties too, so, um, they have the ability to use septic. But, uh, Muck, as, as was mentioned, Muck did review this and, and did approve the exception unanimously. So it's, it's.
So the city would like to see, uh, number two, extension number two on this one. The applicant would like to get by with extension number one.
And the city, I believe the previous city engineer was, was creative and, and found that solution that, that met the intent of the ordinance in providing that sewer service to upstream customers without requiring the full cost for, um, the applicant. So, you know, they, they saved him about half the, the distance of, a little over half, half the distance of what he would be required based on our ordinance by, by coming up with that creative solution. And at the time, um, the applicant agreed with that solution. However, uh, as time's gone on, as was mentioned, he, he's, the applicant stated that his financial position has changed and, and he's unable to do both of those connections.
How long has it been, been in the works as far as when he initially approached the city?
I don't know that I have that answer. I, I apologize. I, I.
Well, over the last two, three years, we've seen those costs tremendously go up. And so if that, it's been that long in the works, that's why I'm asking.
So, I, I mean, I can see, I, I see the benefit of connecting this RV park to the sewer. It provides us with a, a number of new customers there. There, that definitely is a benefit. And a- as was mentioned, if, I think Counselor Man Eric mentioned, if, if we wait until that septic system fails, it, it may go another twenty years before it fails and, and, you know, we, we won't see those connections there. So I do see the benefit of it. Um, if we do force the full connection, he, he may elect to wait until then as well. So it's, I, I don't have a great recommendation for you at this time.
Thanks, Manager Walsh.
I have a question.
Okay, Vice Mayor. Oh.
I, I had a question.
Yes, Counselor Walker.
Now, is that one customer fee ties in or are we gonna gain twenty customers? Or is that one water bill and one sewer bill?
I believe it's one, one water bill, one sewer bill, but with all of those RVs feeding into that.
Okay.
Great question.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, uh, my question was, in looking at the backup, I didn't see the cost difference between the two options. Did I, am I missing that?
I, I don't know that that was included.
There's only a fiscal impact on here that says it's only gonna be approximately five thousand dollars and twelve dollars in annual recurring revenues to the wastewater upbringing fund and wastewater capital renewal fund respectively?
Right, but I was looking for the cost to the applicant for, I mean, obviously it's going to be less to do a hundred and seventy-five feet versus the option number two. So that, that would be one of my, one of my questions is just what's the financial impact? And then my other question is on Prescott. Um, so all those individuals on the opposite side, so you've got vacant land on one side and then you've got all those other parcels on the other side, those are all currently on septic? Is that correct?
That, they would be, yes. They, they do not currently have sewers. So they would also, um, just looking in towards the future, uh, should their septic systems fail, they would be required to, to connect to sewer at that point? And they would also have that payback then that they would.
Right.
Would go back to this gentleman. And to, to answer your question regarding the cost difference between the two, um, I don't believe that information was provided to staff by the applicant.
I'm, I'm leaning towards extension number two just for that reason of servicing all those others. Um, in, I'm looking towards the future, so that's, that's, that's where I'm leaning because how, do we know how long those, uh, parcels have been improved? How long those people have been on septic?
I don't know offhand, but I believe they've been there for some time.
Yeah, so, so they've been there for some time. So to Counselor Eric's point, they may fail. And then it may be, you know, twenty years before they fail. So I, I appreciate the, where Muck was going in that they see the intent and he's hooking up before he needs to. But I think it's to the detriment of all those other property owners on Prescott where they, if, should something happen, that, that's gonna be a huge financial burden onto them rather than a payback to the applicant. So that's kinda, that, that's my thought process.
And Mayor, just to confirm, staff did recommend both connections at Muck. So, so when this was presented to Muck, both connections were, it, it was presented and staff recommended that both extension one and two be required.
That's what I was gonna say. Um, the, the blueprint, the blueprints in the, in the Muck meeting had both extension one and extension two proposed as a project in itself.
So is there not an opportunity to go with one or the other? It's, it's both or, or one as the applicant has come back to us?
So, so the opportu, so staff recommended that both be connected, but there is the opportunity, and really that's what's being requested is the exception to only do extension one. So that's, that's the exception that was approved by Muck and is being requested by the applicant is to only, uh, construct extension one, which then provides service to the RV park, but does not allow for service beyond the RV park.
Do we have the option to do extension two only?
We can, so extension two only would not provide service to the RV park.
Okay.
Um, because of the, the, the terrain, it, it drains to the northeast there, so all the septic systems drain to the northeast.
All right, then.
And Manager Walsh, we've, as we've talked before, down at that end, the northeast end of, of the sun, the RV park, because all his spaces go into one big, um, septic system, correct? So obviously, yeah, septic, septic system must be at that end of the park.
That, that's my understanding.
And that's where he wants the connection at. Okay.
That's, that would be my understanding, yes.
Okay. Counselor Eric?
With the slogan, great, yeah. So we, this question, only exception was septic, and it was unfair to build an exception two. It wouldn't be part of the payback. He couldn't use that for anything, correct?
So that, that is correct. However, just to, to clarify, um, per ordinance and per, you know, per city requirements, in order to connect to sewer, he would need to extend the sewer the full distance along his frontage. So, um, not only the hundred and seventy-five that he's proposing to do, but an additional nine hundred and sixty feet to get it all the way to his, his far property line. So when he initially came to city staff, um, previously, uh, he worked with city engineering and they came up with this alternative of doing extension two and extension one in lieu of the sewer line being, uh, across his entire property. So, um, I, I don't know if that helps to answer the question. So he would not, you're, you're correct, he would not benefit from extension two, but extension two meets the requirements of, of city, city ordinance to extend it across his property.
The only reason I mentioned.
And saves him money.
The only reason I mentioned it was because when we were talking earlier, um, it was mentioned that it would be unfair to the other five if they had to build the sewer. It'd be unfair if he wasn't part of the payback. So that was the only reason I wanted to mention that.
Yeah, that was good.
Counsel, any other comments or questions on this? Counselor Walker, I'm gonna pick on you.
Mayor Watkins, really quick, I just need to ask everybody to make sure you're speaking directly into your microphones because they're having a really hard time hearing everybody tonight. And IT has turned it up as high as they can.
Okay.
So if everybody will just pull them a little bit closer, that'd be great. Thank you.
Likewise, if you can make sure you're pulling into that mic too. I appreciate it. Okay.
You hear me?
If we wanted to live up to the, or, the, so the city ordinance that we have adopted, I think we need to make him do both extensions. Because it wouldn't be fair, you know, if he just did extension one, what is what he's asking for. If anyone down line here ever needed to tie in, they're going across his property. And this time, he's already gone, sold the property or, you know, he already said he's gonna hand it off to a younger generation. Um, and he will be saving money by doing extension two versus going his full frontage. You know, I think if we're, you know, to benefit, it, it, it would, could be cost of city money later if we don't make him put both lines in. You know, staff showed him how he can save some money by putting the second, uh, extension in. I, I think we need to hold him on, on both of them.
Okay.
I could support that.
I think you run the risk of him just pulling out of the project completely. And that's something we also have to consider, just letting you know. I mean, uh, RV park is gonna bring in, what'd you say, twenty-five lots, twenty lots? Or twenty users under one bill? Um, so just keep that in mind. I think, uh, Muck also discussed, you know, we wanna stick, we wanna stop making so many exceptions. Um, but this one kinda is voluntary and the other side doesn't benefit him at all. So they had discussed that that was the main reason why Muck went with this one.
I think the exceptions we've made in the past, there was no other benefit. There was one lot out in the middle of nowhere that, you know, in this one here, there's other properties that could service, you know, that could be serviced by that line. So I'm, I'm, I'm up in the air on it, I really am. But I, I think, I don't think we can just give him the one.
So what is, um, Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, uh, Ms. Maline said there's one customer, multiple. So, Ms. Maline said there's one customer, multiple users. What's, what's the impact? The finan, like, the financial impact?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So there's one bill and all of the users flowing into that. It's about a $5,000 impact annually to the wastewater fund.
Of course, it's once again based on water usage too, and all of those, it's one meter for all the, the whole park.
Yep, it calculates out to about $5,000 a year.
Okay.
The environment impact is huge though, by taking that much water and sewage, not going into a septic, and getting into our, our plant. So I mean, it would benefit the community by letting them do it.
Yes. Okay, Manager Walsh, extension number two. So that is a connection right there at the end of that red, the, to the north there. That's where the one, but that really doesn't work for him because if he's trying to connect down at the northeast end, he's going to still have to do something to connect it all the way up to that end, right?
So there's-
To the, down to the south, down to the southwest, yeah.
So, so the way I understand it, so he's got his RV park that, that basically fronts along Sunshine. The existing sewer comes up to, just to Eagle Rock, and stops there. What typically would be, based on our ordinance, he would have to connect to Eagle Rock and extend it all the way up to basically where that extension two comes out at Prescott.
Correct.
Staff worked with him though to find that if he did both extension one and extension two, he would serve his property and provide for future expansion of the sewer system, basically meeting the intent of the, of the city ordinance. So, that, that was what staff had approved previously, that, that met the intent of the ordinance. He's come back and, basically the, the request that's in front of you is an exception, an exemption to, to not construct extension two. He would still construct extension one, which would only serve his property, but he's requesting that, that this exception be that he not, not construct extension two. So, that's, that's basically the question in front of counsel. So, an approval of the extension, or the, too many X words. An approval of the exception would allow him to only extend to his RV park with extension one and connect there. A denial of the, of the exception would, if he wants to connect to sewer, would require him to build both extension one and extension two. I don't know if that answers the question, I hope.
Yes, no, you clarified it because I see where the extension two ties into the system and of course, extension one. I hate doing exceptions, but I think Counsel Walker did sort of mention, right now, we're not getting anything as far as return into our capacity into the sewer system. And where Counsel Eric has mentioned, this is voluntary, and so now we will start getting that, and he'll still, he'll, he'll pay more into the, to the sewer recovery, uh, the, it will get that, that flow. So, I'm torn, but also being a business owner, I can see why he's trying to save money also. And so I would lean towards granting that exception. Once again, I hate doing that, but every so often, there are causes where it makes sense to do. So that's just my opinion on it, so.
Can I also ask, do we, he doesn't own any of the parcels off of Prescott, right? The ones across the street from those four homes, those two square blocks?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. So he's not even on Prescott. So just throwing that out there.
So, I think we're here because staff tried to work with him and find a compromise to reduce that fee. And it, if they hadn't gone the extra mile to make this compromise, we wouldn't even be having the discussion. He would have either just looked at it and said, it's going to be this far, and I'm going to do it, or I'm not. So, I hate the idea that staff went to all this trouble to try to work with him and make it work and reduce the costs, and then he just comes back and says, I just want to do the bare minimum. But there is the, the part where the water, you know, will go back into the, it'll, it'll go through the sewer treatment system and then in the injection well, right, and back into the aquifer.
And I will, if I can, just, just to the point of, of the environmental aspect of it, generally, your travel trailers, your, your, those types of facilities are designed for water conservation. Because generally, if you're going out camping, you, you, you take your water with you, so you, you try and conserve as much as you can. So, from an environmental standpoint, I, I don't, it's, you're not seeing the same impact that you would from 20 single-family homes as, as you would in here. So, just wanted to clarify that, that one point.
But he does, because I have a lot that's across the street, sort of, there. So I drive by that RV park all the time. He's got a lot of permanent residents there. So, I know what you mean. It's, but he has some available spaces for RVs too. So, once again, I hate granting exceptions, but I don't know. Counsel, what do we want to do on this? Counsel Eric, what is your thoughts on it? What are your feelings? I know you went to Muck, and that's why I'm putting you on the spot.
Jamie brought up a great point. Like, if we weren't here, or if we didn't look for a solution to ease his pain anyways, we wouldn't be here right now. And if he does, if we force him to do one and two, and he doesn't do it, says, all right, you know, I'm just not going to do the project, and a septic fails, then he has to do the whole frontage. So it's a gamble on his end too.
Yep.
It's, it's a really good point, in my opinion, that we tried to help him, the city tried to help him out, and he came back with this. Like, it really affects my thinking now that I'm here. And, shoot, as a business owner, sure, one. As someone who's considering the future of the city, I, I mean, and, and setting a precedent for future applicants and, and making it so others can't say, oh, you did this for him or her.
Good point.
I think I'm with one and two. The four, both, right? So, yeah, I think that's where I am at. Because that was the original compromise, and I want to stick to that. Because he's going to have to take a gamble if it doesn't, if he doesn't pull the trigger on this plan anyways.
Okay.
With a bunch of, the whole frontage.
Mayor, very valid points. Yes.
You mentioned you have a lot in the area. Does that lot beneficial, would that lot benefit from?
I have no structures on it, and it's actually, it's right there, it's two acres, Carl. If you see where Max, I know, do I need to exclude myself?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Would, would you benefit, would you, as the owner of the lot, benefit from this sewer line, meaning if you were to develop it, would you have to?
Good point, Carl. I'm right there at that corner where, I'm not sure where to say it, Max Welding is that? I could point it out, but, anyway, I'm close to where the extension number one is. I would tie it, that's where I would end up tying into, because I'm, there's that, there's that, Tim, do you know where that access point is into the county maintenance facility there? There's a little road there.
Eagle Rock.
It's, and it's, but it's not Eagle Rock, it's farther to the, to the southwest. But Carl, you do bring up a valid point. Maybe I do need to-
Just for clarification.
I'll, I'll show you.
Sorry.
So, I am, here's the county maintenance facility right here. I own this two-acre parcel right here. So there's a little access road right here that goes into that. So I own that right there. And it's undeveloped.
So, sorry.
Okay, so I need to recuse myself. Okay. Thanks, Carl. No, I appreciate you keeping us in the right. That's what, yes. Yes, Vice Mayor. I'm going to let you take lead on this. How's that?
Well, I was going to make a motion. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to deny, deny the request for the exception to sewer extension Sunshine RV Park. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the denial, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion denied.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good job. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, item 5E, City Council Fall Retreat Date Selection and Priority Setting Discussion. Staff is seeking council direction on setting a date for the fall retreat, as well as identifying and setting priorities for the items council would like to cover during the retreat. Discussion and possible action. Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. At our last retreat, the council expressed interest in, in holding a fall retreat to be able to set priorities and, and to basically establish those goals and objectives to, to look for as we enter into the budget season. With that, we are requesting council's direction on a, on a date and time for that fall retreat. Looking at the budget schedule, towards the end of October to beginning of November would be a good time. That is right at the beginning of, of, when we start kicking off budgets with staff. So, to be able to have it at that point would be very helpful in, in knowing council's priorities and which direction you'd like to go. So, open it up to, to the council on setting a date. I know in the past, some topics that have been discussed already as far as placement on that, that fall retreat would be an annexation, which staff is actively engaged in, in looking at various options for annexation. Also, the, the CON process and the, the status of ambulatory services for the area. Another topic is police and fire department billings, and then one more is, is the cart routes and expansion into the industrial park and, and other areas. So those were some of the topics that, that we've already had discussion on, including in that fall retreat, but we'd be open to those, whether those want to be part of it, or any other topics as well, so.
Counsel first, is there anything we want to add to that as far as discussion?
I was-
Counsel Ward?
I just wondering where the discussion on redoing the zoning went that we had months ago, that was supposed to come back to us, and then we just, we kind of dropped it.
Thank you, Mayor, and Counselman Ward. We are working on that. One thing that we've been working on, we, we've found that we've had quite the backlog when it, in zoning, in planning and zoning. So, initially, our, our plan was to, to focus our resources on addressing the zoning ordinance and getting that up to, making the corrections that we're aware of and, and getting that in a better place. We've had to basically focus our resources on getting that backlog up to speed, basically working through that backlog. However, with the hire of our, our new development services director, Jason Moquin, we've actually worked with our, our interim director, Mike Rodriguez, and Mike has agreed to stay on part-time for the next couple of months to work on that zoning ordinance. So we are working on it. Because of the timeframe it was taking for us to get to that, we were considering outsourcing it, going to a, a firm similar to how we did with the general plan and updating our general plan, having an out, outside agency help us in making those revisions. However, it was very fortunate that Mr. Rodriguez has agreed to stay on. With his experience of the area and experience with working with the city, we feel that his expertise will be able to, to better guide those revisions so that it meets, you know, city needs.
Okay. I just didn't want it to disappear.
We have not forgot about it. We are working on it. So thank you for that. And I apologize for not giving an update on that previously.
Thank you.
Tim, could you actually put your mic a little bit closer to you and aim it up in the air more?
Yes.
I just had, my wife texted, because she's a concerned citizen about hearing, hearing us, so I appreciate it.
Tell Mrs. Watkins, I apologize.
Counsel Staley?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I wonder if we, I have a list of things I'd like to add, and I wonder if we could just go over those in our one-on-ones with you and sort of create an agenda that way. So it's a conversation, do you think this is something that would be meaningful in the retreat? And then we kind of go over an agenda, and maybe you send that out to the council, and, and we come back and give it a thumbs up, instead of going through everybody's list tonight. Would that be okay?
I'd be happy, yeah. If you all would like to either in our, in our one-on-ones, share that information, or if you'd like to email me all of that information, I can put the list together and, and share that with council.
So in addition to that, Counsel Staley, I like, I like that idea, but I also like prioritizing our, in order of importance for our council, so that we're hitting everybody's concerns and, and, yeah, so.
List of council, okay with that?
Are we just giving your top three, or something?
We're just going to email it.
Just email everything?
Just email.
Yeah.
Kitchen sink.
Yeah. As I think sometimes you find that some items, and in our discussions, we could probably figure out what could be handled in a regular meeting, or what needs to be a workshop on its own, or what, what are priorities that we can do as part of our retreat. I think you could help us sort through that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for that suggestion, Counsel.
Of course.
Appreciate it. Okay, date then?
Does anybody have any opposition to November 6th? I'm going to throw that date out there.
I don't think so. Smiling.
That is a Wednesday.
That sounds good. Wait, you said the eighth or the sixth?
Sixth.
November 6th is good for me.
It's the day after elections, just heads up.
That is true, and there is no council meeting that, that, that first council meeting. There will not be one.
Oh, yeah, there won't be.
Because of the election. So, the six works. Everybody's, and then, Tim, what time are you proposing? Afternoon or morning? What are we, is it all day? I can't remember.
I, I believe the, the spring retreat, we had an all-day. I'd be open to, to whatever council would like to do, and I, I think it may depend on the, the number of items that we have to discuss.
Okay. And so, sounds like all day, because if I remember right, the spring retreat, we could have done it, either split it over two days, or it was easier to just take one day up, correct? So, there's a six- How much of that is going to be redundant? I mean, as far as-
Good point.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Tim will make sure that it's not redundant.
We will avoid all redundancies. So start in the morning and finish early, hopefully?
Sometime mid-afternoon, if we can get work through everything.
Some, the morning.
Are you going to use sticky notes like Tina?
Say that again.
Sticky notes like Tina?
That was, that was a good, yes.
So it sounds like council, November 6th? Counsel Walker, does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay, and Counsel Ward? Okay. There we go, Tim.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5F, Town Hall Work Session Date and Topics Discussion. Staff is seeking council direction on selecting a date and topic for the town hall work session. Discussion and possible action. Okay, Tim, do you want to-
Thank you, Mayor Watkins.
Throw something at us first?
So, council has expressed interest in, in holding a, a town hall. I believe we've, we've had good direction from Attorney Cooper on this. As far as holding a town hall in order to host, to have a quorum of, of council members there, we need to establish an agenda, publish that agenda, and those topics need to be specific but broad. So, basically, we need topics that, that we can advertise so that as, as public comes and addresses council, it's related to a specific item. So, staff suggesting, based on the fall retreat being now November 6th, that sometime before that, that we hold this, this town hall, so that we can also incorporate those comments that we received during the town hall in that, in that meeting. So, we have council meetings scheduled September 3rd, September 17th, October 1st, and October 15th. So I would, I would recommend avoiding those days, but we can work with council's schedule on, on, you know, how long this, this town hall, you know, what we're, we're estimating, whether it be a couple hours, four hours, however long council would like on that. And then identifying topic, we could do a single topic if we believe it'll, it'll take the full time. We could split it in half and have half one topic and the other half another topic. So, really open to however council would like to proceed.
Counsel Staley?
I really like the idea of doing a survey. We could do a very simple survey on our city Facebook page and city website, advertise it on the digital billboards that it's there, maybe the minor would cover it, and we'd do it for a week.
Okay.
Short-term, and then put these up there, and, and that way, there's true buy-in and that, and we're having a town hall on what the citizens feel are the most important items.
With that survey, would you leave it open-ended, or do we want to pick, say, 10 topics for them to be able to pick their, their top topics?
Yeah, I would do the, I don't know if I would go 10, but I would, I would do the ones that we can anticipate are the most important, and then I would leave a box so that somebody could fill in additional, you know, an other box, and you, because maybe we've totally missed the target on those top ones. But, just to get some good feedback, that's how I would handle that.
Vice Mayor.
I, I support that. I, I think that if we're gonna invite the public and the, we're gonna want, and the public's gonna want to come, they're gonna want a topic about the topics that are important to them. So, I, I like that top topics and then a box where they can select. And I think a week is enough.
And this is why we're doing it, is for the public.
Right.
So, as Tim questioned though, do we want to limit it, especially with this first town hall, do we want to just do one topic to start with, to see how it goes, or do we want to multiple?
I think, depending on what it is, you could do a couple. I mean, if, let's say it's streets and the water line breaks. You could handle those in the same meeting, that's same departments.
They are connected.
You know, coming in and talking about, and kind of talking about that whole thing. So, I, I think you don't want to overwhelm it, you don't want it to be a four-hour town hall. In an hour or two, you could cover two items or three items. I think it depends on what they come back and say, these are the most important things. And maybe they'll come back and say, everything is important and we have to have more than one town hall over the next six months or something.
Which I foresee, that's, that's the whole idea of where we would, what, the sort of direction we want to go anyway.
Is to keep doing them.
Correct.
Right, and to improve transparency and communication. So, I, I think we have to kind of just see how it goes, and then we'll have a better idea of how to do them in the future.
Right.
But I, for timing-wise, you know.
Yeah, if we did like an evening, two-hour.
Yeah.
Maybe like 5:30 to 7:30.
Yeah.
As far as the timeframe, and then, what does the week of the 23rd look like? September, end of September.
Counselor Eric, you wanted to comment too.
So, I was gonna, first things, multi-topic I think is better because it also encourages a cutoff on one topic, so that you can kind of start fresh on another topic. And I think we're efficient enough to be able to handle more than one topic at once. And then, I was gonna throw out that I am out of town all September, so October would have to be for me. I'm here all for October.
You said the week of the 29th, right?
The week of the 23rd.
So, September 23rd does not work for me.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not good for me either.
Okay.
I'll be out of town.
And?
October 17th is the tri-city council meeting, just to throw that out there. And there's.
Thanks for reminding us.
There's a city council meeting on the 15th, so what about?
The 7th, the week of the 7th?
The 7th or 9th, I was gonna throw out the 9th, another Wednesday.
Or in October?
Not the 7th for me.
So, how about October 9th?
The 9th.
We don't all have to be there. If it works for most.
Well, what, what is that?
I said, we don't all have to be there.
Does anyone have?
This is true, we do not.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Does anyone have a conflict with the 9th?
Well, do you want to do it on Wednesday, or do you want it on Tuesday? Because oftentimes, we've, on, when we do half weeks, we like to keep it on a Tuesday. That way, at least, we know city council stuff is always on Tuesdays. Do you want to keep it to that?
I can do either.
Annie?
I, I'll just add that there is a, if you're looking at October, there is a Planning and Zoning Meeting on the 9th in that evening.
Okay.
That's the safe thing about Tuesdays, is that there's no current border commission
Correct.
Meeting scheduled for that time.
I know you've, you've shared that with us before too, that Tuesdays are usually sort of open for us.
The 8th works for me.
So, would the 8th work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. And of course, in the evening, what time do we want to start?
5:30 to 7:30.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just make a suggestion, not knowing the turnout we're going to get, I, I don't know if this venue would be the, the, the right venue for a town hall. I could look into possibly working with the county on the Board of Supervisors auditorium for that night as well.
And we also have 5:19 though.
Or we could, we could look at 5:19 as well.
Because I know they're gonna want to charge us if we go to the county.
Possibility. I might have some connections to talk to.
You do have some connections.
But, but yeah, no, that, that is definitely a possibility, that there could be a fee there. I, I would, I would imagine there probably will be, yes.
Okay. Okay, so does that, does that date work for everybody then?
Yes.
October 8th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Tim, what else do we need? What else do you need for us?
Are there any, I, I guess as far as topics, I know we, I listed a number of topics that, that could be for that. Are there, are those good topics that you'd like to see in the survey? Are there others that you'd like to see? So, just, just for the record, I, I've got, on, on the list that are, of possible topics, we've got roads, waterline, waterline repairs, interchanges, airport land release, annexation, sustainable revenue sources, crime, business growth, and homelessness.
I do think, I get a, I mean, we just got an email or a letter in our boxes recently, but I do hear more and more about code enforcement, cleaning up the town. I think that's an, that's a big one that is really gaining traction among our citizens.
I think we all received that letter, as you're referring to.
Yeah, and that's not the first, for sure.
Can I also add to the poll, senior services?
Does that give you enough? And then, if you put a survey out there, then the top two, we would handle that first night.
I think we're about 11 with that, so yeah, that should be plenty.
Okay.
Well, we'll get a, a survey put together, we'll get it out there, and, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, counsel. Item number six, Department Reports. 6A Street Maintenance Web Page Department Report. Jack, you are the star of the night.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I will try to keep this short. Clerk Meredith ain't gonna let me mess it up again. Thank you, Annie. All right, so, request was made a while back to beef up our public outreach, specific to Kingman area streets. And so, got some information from Councilmember Eric, and we've tried to incorporate those. What I'd like to say, we'll share a link with you, so you guys can go through this. The website is not open. We went kind of back and forth on the best way to present this to you guys. Tried to do it in Publisher or some other means, build the theme of the webpage, and then carry it over, but kind of concerned that it wouldn't look the same once we got it into the webpage. So, IT was, was great, worked with me, they built a, a mock-up page, was what you're looking at right now. And that allowed us to actually build, mostly build the website. So, there's some functionality that won't work, some, some tabs and some buttons that would take you to another app or to a gallery where you could access, say, one of the things I'll show you here is a water patching app. And so, the first part is just the main landing page, gives a little bit of history, where we are, how we got there. The three pieces, well, I guess two pieces really, that were requested to be part of this landing page was road maintenance strategies, and then also the budget allocation and spending. And so, again, we'll send you a link, you guys can go through this. I didn't specifically talk to Manager Walsh about how to bring this back, but what I was thinking, I know I'm due for a pavement maintenance update in the very near future, and so, if everybody was amenable, I would come back and incorporate the landing page as part of that report and obtain some of the feedback that you guys might have when you've had some opportunity to review it. So, again, a lot of these slides you guys have seen, I did not include my most hated slide, which is the 100% funding. I did change it, because I just did not like the way that looked, but these are slides that the council and the community have seen numerous times as we've gone through the process of looking at where we're at and what we needed to invest into our paved assets. And so, I still want to actually take some more of those. What I was considering doing was taking a lot of those old presentations and putting those to where you could actually see the progression of, of what the city had been doing, working toward funding the maintenance strategy that we have working for us right now. I, I didn't do that yet, I still am going through those, making sure that information's relevant. We have a whole bunch of videos that were done when we had a PIO, and I, I went through those, and the, the, part of the problem with those, they reference old information, and so, I just wanted to make sure what we share is relevant and up-to-date. And so, we're still going through some of those. Budget was a big part that was requested, both the allocation and, you know, when we come back for our, and, or our regular pavement maintenance updates, we're talking about how much we've spent to that date. And finance actually had something, I didn't realize it, IT had pointed me in that direction. I know that they'd shared it, but I'd never, never poked around in their program. And so, these two buttons down here will actually take us out from our website, the cities, and, let's see if I can get us there. Maybe? Thank you again, Annie. So, this takes you out to Open Finance. This is the webpage or the information that Finance has that covers all aspects of the city. We got it to link up to where it takes you specific to HERF. And there's two buttons at the bottom of the screen that you'll notice, one takes you to the revenues, because, you know, I put some information in the text that talks about HERF, how that's collected by the state and distributed to the cities, counties, and towns. And then, you know, we also, with the funding mechanism that was approved by council, received general funds for general ma, or I'm sorry, for payment maintenance as well. And so, this site is actually really useful, and we talked about, you know, kind of a thermometer that shows how much we have budgeted versus how much we've spent. This does all of that. And not only that, you can go forward and backwards, you can look at different fiscal years. The, the individuals that go to this page will be able to see what we've spent, what's budgeted, not only now, but again, looking backwards. And so, just as an example, so we're talking, street repair and maintenance, that covers two divisions for us now, our division within, within streets, because we, we did the street repair, maintenance, and improvement. And so, those two are kind of separated in here right now, and you can actually drill down and see where those funds are spent. And this, this credit is all finance, I just, I think it really met the intent of what was asked for in the, in the landing page. And again, we do that both for what our actual budget is, what's available, and then the revenue side. I thought the revenue was pretty important, because people don't realize where all their funds come from. I did, as I was sitting here going back through the presentation, I missed one piece that I want to add. We talked specifically about HERF, but we, I, I did not mention that we do not receive property tax, and we only get 2.1% generally of the sales tax that are, that we see are collected in Kingman. And so, I think it's going to import, important to mention those two facts. And so, already, I can see some changes I want to make to this, and then also make changes based on council's feedback. So, this is where it gets kind of clunky. The, the way the webpage works on this left side over here, it'll redirect you to different portions of information that we wanted to share. And so, one of those was our strategies for preservation. We're just gonna move back and forth between those right now. Once the website was finished and we went live, the functionality changes and becomes a lot more intuitive and user-friendly. So, this one, again, we talk a little bit of, of where we are. You've seen these slides, talk about the maintenance trap we were in, the additional funding that council has dedicated to, to our pavement preservation, lifecycle costs of asphalt. We talk about distresses and pavement preservation treatments, and a little bit about how those are selected. I have some hyperlinks that I'd actually like to place in here that take you out to, I gotta work with IT on this, but it would take you to, say, ASJO or the American Pavement Maintenance Institute, those sorts of things that have additional resources if somebody wanted to kind of geek out on asphalt and dig into it. So, I'll go back. So, the other two pieces are current project and past preservation. So, this is showing current projects, what we're working on right now, as we talked about in the last pavement maintenance update, is focusing on the residuals this year and whatever's left over. Once we get the three districts you're seeing here, this is District 2, 3, and 4, and those, two of those are crack sealed, and so, we have one crack seal left to do and then two chip seals. But, we'll be able to show what pavement maintenance is planned. The goal on this one, I'm just showing you a snapshot of what I used just out, I've exported into Google Earth, is we have GIS, so you can make it live. There are other agencies that have a live GIS app, to where it's not a static view like you're looking at, you can zoom in and out, see your house, what road you're at, look at the treatment that was, that is planned, and, you know, be able to provide better information into the community that way. So, again, you're looking at a static view, but, you know, if, if this is the, the structure of what council looks for, then we would look to move forward and, and move that into GIS to where it's more user-friendly. So, along with what we are currently working on, we also wanted to talk about past preservation and the work that the city actually has done, even through the, the years of, you know, less funding. Again, just a static view, but we would take all the treatments that we've been tracking over, this is from 2014, we would take all of those and, and hopefully be able to load that into the GIS app and look at those year by year as layers, so you could see when the last treatments were done. Maybe they land in the same app, they don't, I, I don't know. I need to work with GIS a little further on, and we've had some basic discussion, but until we got feedback from council, that's where we had stopped for now. And our favorite piece right now is asphalt patching for water leaks, that had came up. And so, we actually use an app internally right now that, when the water crew makes a repair, they mark it needs asphalt or concrete repair, and it closes the work order for them and it moves it on to streets. And so, talked to GIS a little bit, engineering, and about trying to make that a public-facing side. We have some functionality, we can go in and, and sort and change and move stuff around. We want to make it more of a static view, but again, the map will be interactive, they can zoom in and out and look exactly where their house is. Oh, yep, that's the patch that's in front of my driveway, I can see it's on the list and, and, you know, help people know that we, we have them on, on our radar. Static view, you're looking at the dashboard that we see right now, actually meeting with GIS again, I think tomorrow to, to make some, provide some better functionality on what we use already. And so, this is what we would include or intending to include on the water patching side. This, I didn't mention, one of the things we'd like to do also is be able to show the patches that have been completed, anything that's outstanding. The way it's set up right now, there's a, there's a glitch in it at the moment, but if you look down on the bottom right side here, it has open and completed, so you would be able to look at what needs to be repaired, what has been repaired, and by, by calendar or fiscal year is what we're working on. Counselman Ward, look like you had a question?
I do. Does that include the utility cuts that are being made by the contractors that are all over town?
It does not at the moment. That's a conversation we could have with engineering, trying to include those. I, I think, I don't know how we would capture all of those, but that's a conversation I can have with engineering.
Well, I'm just saying that the average person doesn't understand the difference between those square cuts.
You're correct, and I actually kind of mentioned that in here, I didn't put a lot of text, but just mentioned that this is for water. We really don't see a lot of sewer, but I guess I should rename it City Utilities, Water and Sewer, and then all the other utility cuts are, you know, handled by their respective operators. And, and that's something we could, and some of the other maps we have, when they open up, there's a, I don't want to call it a disclaimer, but an additional notice that pops up, so people can see it. And I'd actually contemplated putting, you know, utility phone numbers in there, so if there's a gas line or some other line that they see that's in front of their house, that, you know, they can contact those utilities as well, or engineering that handles the right-of-way permit. So, that's something we can address as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Before you switch over, is there also a schedule? Like, you said, they can see how many are outstanding, how many have been done. Like you said, they can see how many are outstanding, how many have been done. Is there also, like, a schedule of upcoming patches to be done or an area to be done?
Yeah, currently it doesn't have that. That's some of the stuff we're working through, is trying to put attributes that show up so when a user clicks on their patch, it may show, you know, we're looking at this week for the repair or something. So people have an idea when we're actually going to be there.
Perfect, thank you.
The last piece that I added in here was functional class. And I wanted, it's not necessarily specific to pavement preservation, but we talk about the focus that we put on arterial collectors versus what we have on residential's. And one of the videos I said had some old information that wasn't as relevant was specific to arterial collector, functional classes, rather. And I was wanting to link just to that video because it was pretty well-done as far as it would show, this is a local street and you could see the volume of traffic on it, collector, arterial. And that way people could really understand it. I say it all the time, the people that work in that world, you know, understand it. You guys hear it from us all the time. And so I don't know that the general public understands the difference in the cost for maintenance and repair and the traffic volumes. You know, tried to highlight in here, like the video did, arterials are our lifeline. They are, they're our economic drivers for, you know, both our businesses and tourism and move the most amount of traffic. And so I want to, my, if we keep this one, if council didn't decide that you wanted to look at it a different direction, my intent would be to beef this up a little bit and provide some more of that information on why, we talk about the strategies, excuse me, but why we focus on certain roads as far as their functional class. And with that, I'm sure you guys have heard me speak enough tonight. Again, we'll share a link with you. That way, you guys, the link is not public right now. It's, you just have to have the link itself and then you'll be able to open it. Annie has that. Again, functionality is not what it will be when you look at the actual website when it were to go live. So when you're looking at, you know, some of the graphics and things, we can change those and the way the website will move around, the way you can navigate the webpage will also be a lot better. And so if you guys have any questions or feedback, I know you haven't had an opportunity to look at it, but I just wanted to explain what we did and why. That way, when you guys were actually able to see that, you had some context for making, providing your comments.
Okay, Councilor Eric.
Hi, Jack, this is awesome. I think information is everything, especially when we live in a digital world where people randomly just write, oh, their city neglects our streets, and we can just finally give them a link that says, this is what we're doing and this is what we're working with and this is the process. A couple of things right off the top that I want to make sure are on this, or a few questions I have. The report, a pothole from SmartGov Run Center, I think would be a great addition to this. I had a question, question on those pictures, do you have them where they can be blown up when you click on them?
They're not, but that's the intent.
Okay.
On some of our.
Especially on some of those info.
Yeah, our last ones, we had it to where it was a hyperlink to where it would open up in a full page.
One thing I thought about after our meeting was a clear, defined picture or just a layout of the residential districts. Sometimes those lines get a little blurry, and it doesn't even have to be like, sure, it can be the pictures, but it may be like something that's more relatable, like west of Stockton Hill, from Gordon to here, you know, like.
Yeah, so if we add those into, if we add those into the GIS layer, you'll be able to zoom in and out and move around and really give you a lot more detail. So I think we can address that comment pretty easily.
Okay, I got that, I got that. And then last but not least, I also was wondering if you'd be down with adding ADOT projects, maybe in one of those tabs on the side, so that they include the interchanges and updates on those along maybe with a timeline? Because where else better than, you know, laymen would just look on this one website and get all the information all in one place? Something that we could maybe include is just the ADOT interchanges that we have going on, on both ends.
Are you looking, are you looking for just specifically the interchanges or ADOT projects as a whole?
I was thinking just the ADOT interchanges because they're such a big project and very identifiable, and they're long-term, and people are going to be wondering about those. So just the two on each end was where I would start. Maybe include like the video or just the maps of what they're supposed to entail. I know a lot of people assume that the Ranch of Santa Fe interchange includes that extension out to the airport and kind of somewhere where we can clarify that that's not what that is. Or, for example, the Clack Canyon closure that not a lot of people knew about until it did close. Information like that would be helpful to have in this page, I think, as well.
Yeah, we can definitely look at.
Awesome job, I mean, this was way above what I was expecting. I agree with you a little bit on the clunkiness, it feels a little antiquated, but little things.
Yeah, it'll definitely get better. Like I say, I appreciate IT setting this up because I think it gives us a much better picture than if I put it on PowerPoint or into some other programs, so.
Absolutely.
It'll definitely get better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Baby steps, where it's going in the right direction.
And I think when you put it together like this, it really emphasized how powerful something like this can be. I think a lot of people, I think you included, see the utility of this much more once it's together.
Yeah, absolutely. It's honestly, I think it'll be great, it'll be useful for getting information out to people. Just a matter of getting it up off the ground and keeping it relevant and up to date. So I think it will be good, thank you.
Thanks, council. Any other questions or comments for Jack? Okay, keep up the good work, Jack. And so, Annie projected, I know you're working on all these bugs, sort of projected timeline for when it might go live? I know, once again, I'm just throwing that out there, sort of.
Yeah, I don't have an exact date for you, mainly because some of the components aren't things that I'm working on. So working with other departments on what they have for workload, specifically like GIS. So before I stick my foot in their mouth, I'd really like to speak to them. But if we have your guys' feedback when I do the next council, or I'm sorry, pavement maintenance update, we can get the feedback at the same time, try and make those changes. If you guys didn't have any major, which didn't sound like there was major feedback on the apps that we were wanting to use, we're going to go ahead and start on those. So I would say it wouldn't be long after that maintenance update that we could have it live.
Wow, that soon, so November 1st? I, once again, I'm not trying to, I'm just rough, rough estimate. I'm reversed the year.
Yeah, first of the year.
This stuff takes time.
Yeah, I wouldn't see any issue with first of the year. November might not be a problem, I just don't want to speak on behalf of Mike's team. I don't know what all they have going, and so before I volunteered them for anything, I'd like to make sure I don't override some other project.
No, it's a great project coming down, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You too. Item number seven, announcements by Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager, Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Just a couple of announcements. We have Citizens Academy starts up on September 25th. We are accepting applications for that right now. We also have Youth Advisory Council open, and we are accepting applications. We've received applications on both of those committees and it's going well, so. And then just a notice to the board, we do have, or to the council, I apologize. We do have a number of vacancies on, we've got a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment, Clean City Commission, Municipal Utility Commission, and the Transit Advisory. So if there are any residents that would like to participate in any of those commissions, we would welcome their applications.
Thanks, Manager Walsh. Councilor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Ward?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
I talked to some friends of mine that were here from California over the weekend. He's been coming here since he was seven or eight years old, owns some property here. But he was extremely skeptical of the downtown project. And he was here either Friday or Saturday night. They go downtown every time they come here because his wife quits and they go. He said he'd never seen so many people on just a regular night downtown. And he was very complimentary of everything we've done with the street, the streetscape. They had done, basically started the same thing in the area where he lives a few years ago, and they never finished it, they let all the trees die. And basically, when I was telling him about the project, that's what he was saying. And he was very complimentary. Kudos to Kingman.
It's always good to hear that kind of praise and feedback, so tell your friend thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, Councilor Staley?
Jamie and I got to go to the 2024 Rural Policy Forum down in Conwood and Clarkdale this, what, two weeks ago? When was the last week? Okay, yeah, sure, one to two weeks ago. And it was very eye-opening for me. I'm not going to speak on Jamie's behalf, but it was very interesting to see how many different problems there are that a city in town can have. And it makes you very grateful for what you do have when you see it in the eye. Got to meet a lot of cool people. Besides that, August 25th, this Sunday, is the cleanup, city cleanup, the Kingman Cleanup Initiative. We're going to be cleaning the wash from Beverly to Airway behind Walmart and by Big Five. So if you have nothing to do, we're going to be starting at 7:00 AM on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one quick announcement because I love our Parks Department and what they're accomplishing. And of course, this Friday night, August 23rd, is the drive-in movie night. And I'm just going to read this real quick, and that's all I wanted to say. Drive-in movie nights have become popular and those in attendance have raved about them. If you haven't been, Mike, did you produce this? If you haven't been to one that the Parks and Recreation Department has hosted, now is your chance. You can sit in the comfort of your vehicle and enjoy time spent with family and friends. Movies will take place downtown at Southside Park in the lower parking lot near Field Number 2. Concessions will be available. Featured movie will be determined in the month prior to each showing via Facebook vote. Raffles, pre-movie music, and other event information will be part of the evening event. Arrivals may begin at 5:30 PM, and the featured movie will begin at dark, open to all ages. Entry by cash donation. Located at Southside Park, of course, 1,001 Buchanan and Topeka Streets. Once again, I appreciate that our Parks Department is taking care of, trying to offer these kinds of things and make our town more livable and.
The movie is ET.
Oh, is it going to be ET this time?
So it'll be ET, yep.
This Friday? This Friday night, so that'll be a great thing to do. It's like the old drive-in movies, so that'll be great. Thank you. And once again, appreciate that all is done in our community by those who volunteer and give up their time. And thank you. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Councilor Eric?
Sorry. Now that the landing page is going, we have an idea. One thing that I wanted to get to would be to figure out what the process and cost would be to fix roads like those in the maze where you have developed properties already, but there's just one, one frontage that is a dirt. And whether we can maybe do a long-term program that fixes one per month or quarter or by, you know, two per year, whatever we need to do. Just kind of maybe get a tally around those around the city.
Thank you, council. Anything else?
I do have one.
Vice Mayor?
I know Councilor Staley had brought this up, and I just wanted to make sure it was still on the radar. And that was TPT reporting for the downtown area. I think we opened that first part of June, so I'd like to see when that could come, if it's December, or what that looks like.
So finance actually is on top of it, as always. And I just received the first report that includes June, just this past, just today? We got it today. I'm reviewing that and I'll have that out to council. I'll have it out to council this week.
Okay, perfect.
Great. One more quick thing I wanted to mention, in conjunction with, and I apologize for keeping you all here, but in conjunction with what Councilor Ward talked about and his friend talked about Fridays and downtown and what's going on, I guess August 1st Friday was almost, this is from the ladies over the chamber, that our August 1st Friday was almost, if not as busy as the June 1st Friday when we dedicated the downtown streetscape. I mean, that was huge, and there was no parking anywhere. And they said that that happened again on August, the first Friday.
Yeah, it was downtown. There was no parking.
I mean, that is amazing, and once again, a proof to all of us on council and our citizens on the effect that what downtown is doing. So I appreciate that. Appreciate all our citizens that are coming downtown and supporting our downtown. So anyway, with that, I don't think there's any objection, but we are adjourned.